I'm gonna call to order this Livingston City Commission meeting on February sixth, two thousand and twenty four, and it is five thirty-two. Uh, we'll call please.
Chair Cal.
Here.
Vice Chair Noots.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Willage.
Here.
You have the corner.
Thank you. So we'll start out this evening with public comments. This will be public comment for items that are not on the agenda. I'll remind folks that individuals are reminded that public comment should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervision, control jurisdiction, or advisory power. So if anyone has public comment for anything that's not on the agenda this evening, we'll start in the room and feel free to step up to the podium. Come on up. Wendy, you know the drill that will remind everybody name and address for the record, please.
If there's a piece of paper here.
Do we have? Thank you very much, Wendy.
What's that song cheers where everybody knows your name?
Yes.
It's our first time doing this thing.
Oh, is it? Yeah, I believe you can feel. Where it says address, can I put slacks instead of address? Sorry, I don't tend to see the pun, people.
Thank you for lightening the mood as we begin this evening.
Well, hopefully it's white lightning. Anyway, just three quick comments. And I I have to be honest, at seventy and the way Livingston has changed over the years, I don't know all the committees, all the do-dos, all the volunteers, all the organizations that are in charge of whatever, but I'm just gonna lay it out there. I hold in my hand a piece of notebook paper from didn't put the date where I had a neighbor's dog just barking incessantly, and I know dealing with Diane's daughter anyway. That there's an ordinance where we have to keep a record of this and then turn it in before anything is handled. It used to be that if you had a problem with the neighbor's dog, you called the police, they came and sat there with a stopwatch. Quentin will remember that. They came with a stopwatch, timed it for three minutes and recorded how many times the dog barked, and then they issued him a citation, and I wanna be friends with my neighbor, and I've gone to him several times and approached him. He leaves early in the morning, puts the dog in the backyard and heads to Bozeman, so there's no control with any thing, and I've had a neighbor that's so stressed, he said if it was legal to have a firearm in the city, I would shoot him, and I says, well, that's not how you handle it. But anyway, to just give you an idea of the stress level of barking dogs, if you would review the dog, barking dog ordinance and go over it, here's how many times I was in bed sleeping, and I would have to roll over and reach up and get my notebook and pen, write that down, and hope that's the last time the dog barked, to leave it there, and then the dog started barking again, and I can leave this if you want it, and I recorded about twelve times before I got out of bed where the dog was barking. So if you would review the dog thing, and I hope it doesn't, I don't know if it falls under your noise ordinance or whatever, but if we can go back to that, and it's not that I hate my neighbor, because I don't wanna ever feel that. Secondly, I know we're looking at a new recplex. My concern is for Grandma. And I'm talking about the Civic Center on on McLeod Island at Miles Park. If we can take good care of that. I mean, the Harlem Globe Trotters were there when my mother was fourteen, The Trap, the movies of Von Trapp Family Singers, The Sound of Music, The Trap Family came to Livingston and performed there. There's a lot of history there, and I know there's not a lot of natives that our heart is in that, but I would like to see better care of the Civic Center, because I know we're keeping it. But Grandma needs a new dress. She needs she needs a shower, and she needs painted, and I'll paint as much as I can. This'll be my sixth season as a senior volunteer as painter for Public Works and Park and Rec Department. And then, third, I talked to Mike this morning about the Park and Rec Director about saving the swimming pool and Mike, what's his name? Maggie's his wife, and she runs the Civic Center. About saving the swimming pool, tearing it out and putting a new one there, no matter how fancy. The Yellowstone River used to flow through there, but I think it's, no matter what we do, if we build over at Katie Bonnell Park or not, the majority of Livingston students, and I could be wrong, the teachers would know, are low income, and they just can't go all over town. Some have bikes, but to go clear to Anne and Gallatin, I think is kind of unfair, and I think we should leave it across the street from the Nelson, or yeah, Nelson McClair Skate Park, and leave that. Just whatever you do with the recplex, you know, go for it. But just leave the public swimming pool or, you know, yeah, just redo it and leave it there, you know, because I just think that's so crucial for kids that are familiar with the schools and the area and the park and everything and the duck pond and everything to leave the the pool there, if you would. When my mother was a girl, the lagoon was the pool. That's that's ancient history. I talk too much, I know. But anyway, those are my three concerns is the barking thing. Go back to getting help right away, because it's very stressful. And then, yeah, anyway. That's all.
Thank you, Wendy.
Yes.
We're gonna take a break for some second.
Oh, and Carrie, congratulations.
Yes.
Any other public comment for items not on the agenda?
Bushgravo two oh forty Scallenger Street. I remember my name just by saying this over and over at the meeting for twenty-five years. I I wanna bring up something that I think is probably the most serious thing I've ever brought up before the city commission, and it seems simple. I've found that the city commissioners have meetings with the city manager. And when I was on the city commission, I basically was not allowed to have, and I don't recall ever having a meeting with the city manager, informal or formal. Because as a city commissioner, I was there was a concern that I might be discussing something with policy in it, so it just simply didn't happen. So when I came across an issue, it was in the packet, and the public was able to see what I saw at the same time the public saw. And I have found out, frankly, I was really surprised when Mal Friedman said his farewell, and he said he had had meetings with the city manager. And when I was on the commission, the only person who had meetings of any kind with the city manager was the chairman of the committee, the commission, and they spoke of of agenda items and so forth. Now, I found out that this is, first of all, I wanna preface this by saying this is the most honest, decent, in my judgment, city commissioner and city manager we've ever had in Livingston, and I admire you all tremendously. But I think this issue is absolutely profound in that no city commissioner should be having meetings with the city manager in between city commission meetings. Now, nor should they be suggesting agenda items. The only place, of course, that you know that you, as a commissioner, can suggest commission items what is to view at the meeting prior to the meeting coming up. Now, this constitutes what they call a walking forum. And I called the Senate for local government. I thought, well, maybe things have changed since I was on the city commission, maybe laws have changed. And Dan Clark said, I said, can they, city commissioners have meetings with the city manager? And he said, they can have meetings, but they may not discuss anything that has to do with policy at all. And of course, anything that comes up before you at a city commission meeting is policy. So in the in the course of a conversation, I found out the city manager had talked to Clark with one of you about an overpass, say, and I thought that was a terrific idea, that you would take out the base camp building, and then you would go over the road tracks, and then you would come back over to Washington School, take that out and have some kind of overpass. Well, that would be I found out about it because the city manager has spoken with the city commissioner about that. That's policy. I should have known about that at the same time that the city commissioners found out about that and not before. And this is a serious, serious question, because it is such a violation of public policy of sunshine laws that it could jeopardize the decisions you make even in terms of your credibility. So I think this is something that should be discussed in public, and I will, I will bring it to the public. And it is something that this city has to take a very serious look at. It's not worth it. It's just not worth it for city commissioners to meet with the city manager in between city commission meetings. You, it's just as easy for you to get that information in packets. It's just not worth ruining your credibility as a city commission by not following the letter and the spirit of the law. This is a probably the most serious issue that I have ever seen us come up with. Sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, if if I may, I would appreciate the opportunity to address the comments that were provided. Those comments were provided to me in written form yesterday, and they've been reviewed by the city attorney.
Let's wait for just one minute, maybe. Thank you. Okay, let's make sure folks could hear you. Thank you, Mr. Gager.
Excellent. Appreciate it. The appreciate the comments from the community. We did receive them in written form yesterday, and they've been reviewed by the the city attorney. In addition, I've had conversations with folks from the local government center, as well as my peers across the state, and I can assure you and everyone else in Livingston community that we are not breaking any state laws in the conduct of our business. All decisions and deliberations occur in the public. That said, I do, as do most city managers in the state of Montana and nationwide, I do meet with the commissioners outside of open session. I do not meet with more than a quorum of the decision of the decision makers, the commissioners, outside of public session, and we speak informationally on city matters, including operational matters and upcoming scheduling items on the agenda. Commissioners do have a right, just as every citizen has a right, to have a conversation with the city manager regarding operational business of the city, including prospective plans for capital projects such as an overpass or a wellness center. And and while I do respect the comments, the city is preparing a response to the comments, but in in our estimation and conversations with the local government center, it appears as though the comments in the direction of the local government center have been misconstrued, and and the the local government center just yesterday in conversation very much affirmed my right to meet with the city commissioners outside of open session, so long as it is not a quorum, and we are not deliberating and are making any decisions outside the public. So we will provide a written response. That response will be made public and available to all members of the community, and we do have case law that that will be provided that substantiates all the messages in the rebuttal. So I thank you for the opportunity.
No. Commissioners, this is a pretty serious charge. Thank you, Mr. Gager, for that. I wanna allow you the opportunity to say anything if you'd like this moment.
No, I'll look forward to the legal response.
I've never heard of anything like this before. It's on, how are you supposed to get anything done? Do any work? No, that's
And and I will
It's asinine. Sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. And I will just say that the commissioners add things to agendas in the way that we are supposed to. If you'll remember, just a few weeks ago, Vice Chair Noots, Chair Noots at the time, asked to have something brought back to the agenda. She did that during a meeting, and it was seconded, and then it was added to the agenda. That's how we as personal commissioners get things on the agenda that we are specifically interested in. So we are following the letter of the law, and I trust that Mr. Gager and our attorney will make sure that all that information gets out. Thank you.
And that's the only way we can get something on the agenda is as a commissioner by bringing it up and having it seconded.
Yeah.
It's much easier for somebody in the public to get something on the agenda than it is for commissioners.
Patricia, I'm not closed public comment, but let's let others have the opportunity to have public comment first. Is there any other public comment for things not on the agenda in the room?
Somebody else.
Rick Van Aken, two twenty, West Montana, Livingston. As far as items not on the agenda, I thought, okay, this is a chance to talk about the north side. Now, I'm I'm following some of the work that's being done to try to address some of the things on the north side, but one of the other commissioners, one of the commissioners who happens to live on the north side like me and is the only one that lives on the north side. I'm telling you that she's bringing to you important questions about the drawbacks of living on the north side. I've said it before, I'll say it again, living, the north side of Livingston is a food desert. It's hard to even get a cup of coffee on that side of town. And until we address the things that need to be done in terms of improving our our access and everything to the north side. It's where it's always a drawback, but half the town was over there. You can you can run the numbers. Half the town was on the north side of the tracks. So everybody is using that, you know, that those crossings all the time, and I've always felt like that the south side of town give them a slot to the north side of town. But but we really need you guys to be really serious about trying to address the issues that we have on the north side. We have no, we have no public services. We have no, you know, we have a school who is with which has actually been what, closed, closed up for regular school services, so even the buses have to cross the tracks all the time. And stuff like that, and it just I am I'm a North Sider, because I've lived there for seventy years, sixty years, and I just wanna be sure that everybody recognizes that that the north side is is lacking in a lot of services. I'll give you a real specific example. I use Gallatin Street all the time to get up and down the north side. When I was on city commission, I was the one who pressed the issue and actually got guardrails on on Gallatin Street. But Gallatin is, you can call it a street, but it's really a winding road with with narrow spots and things like that. And the response that I always got before was, well, we're, you know, we're restricted by the by the landscape and everything, how wide we can make that road, and things like that. We all know that engineers can do anything. I once had engineers tell me, I thought it was pretty funny. Well, full engineer said, hey, we're engineers. All we need is time and money. So we all know that the issue, we got lots of time, but shortage of money. But I'd like to see the city of Livingston work on north side issues and be serious about it, and if anybody wants to come and take a ride around the north side, and I'll point out a few things. I'll be glad, glad to show you around the north side, because I know people don't get over there unless they have. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Rick. Anyone else in the room, or I'm gonna also go to online, online, anyone else online for public comment for items not on the agenda? Right, I don't see anyone online. We'll do last call in the room. Anyone else in the room? Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment for items not on the agenda. And we'll move forward.
As a mechanical engineer, it's true, all we all we need is time and money, and we can do that.
All right, consent items. Would anybody like to pull any of the consent items this evening? If not, then I'd entertain a motion.
We'll make a motion through consent items, A, B, C, and D. Second.
A motion by Schwartz and a second by Lyons. All in favor? Motion carries. Right. We have a proclamation tonight. Let me get. This one took me, caught me off guard. I'll say. Okay. Proclamation of the of the Livingston City Commission declaring February sixth, two thousand and twenty-four as National Chopstick Day in the city of Livingston. Whereas chopsticks originated in China at least three thousand years ago and were first used as utensils in the process of cooking, and whereas these convenient implements began to be used by individuals to eat noodles, rice, meat, vegetables, and more, and much more, around four hundred B.C. And whereas originally made from bamboo, chopsticks have since been crafted from various traditional materials, including different types of wood, metal, ivory, and ceramics, and whereas in Japan, crossing chopsticks at the table is considered rude, and Taiwan, biting on them is seen as poor etiquette. In Korea, picking up chopsticks before the elders is rude, and in China, sparring food with chopsticks is deemed poor form. And whereas many Westerners are more accustomed to using a fork and knife, learning how to use chopsticks presents a delightfully a delightful activity for National Chopsticks Day. And now, therefore, it be resolved, on behalf of the Livingston City Commissioner, I, Carrie Kale, do hereby declare February sixth, two thousand and twenty-four to be National Chopsticks Day in Livingston, Montana. Further, I urge and encourage community members to enjoy a meal at a local restaurant, such as The Walk, Rice Vine Thai Cuisine, Big Sky Thai, or Neptune's Tap House and Eatery, and give those chopsticks a try. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Sir. It is always fun and a pleasure to recognize the unique culinary options that exist in the city of Livingston amongst all of our small businesses down that way.
Very much. Anything from my fellow commissioners?
China uses a hundred and thirty million chopsticks, pairs of chopsticks per day.
China does? Wow.
Did you wanna call the meeting, and we should just like go to different It wouldn't be a quorum. We could go to different ones.
We could spread out, huh?
Yeah.
I'm still challenged with using.
We can.
My boys can do it.
All right. Well, let's go ahead and move forward to the meeting. We're gonna go ahead and move on to action items. So action item A, Resolution five one two five, a resolution by the City of Livingston City Commission authorizing the submission of a grant application to DOT rebuilding America infrastructure with sustainability and equity raise commitments of needed funds and authorizing the city manager to or designate enter into required contracts for grant funds to engage in a court in a corridor study and evaluation of a viable and sustainable option for a great separated crossing. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kale. The item before you is related to an upcoming grant application that staff looks to submit. You may recall, this time last year, we pursued the same U.S. DOT grant funding program for a planning grant to evaluate a grade separated crossing. And while we were unsuccessful last year, I did have a great opportunity to speak with the staff at the U.S. Department of Transportation and learn where our application was not as good as that could be. And so we have made some revisions and improved our application and expect to be competitive this year. I will note last year, several other Montana cities did receive raised planning grants, and so I am optimistic that there is an opportunity this year, given that so many other communities had their needs met last year. So I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners? Any questions? Commissioner Lyons?
The the packet mentions that there will be project cosponsors and supporters. Could you shed light on who that's referring to? Absolutely. So we are working with a number of community partners. As far as cosponsors, primarily those will be the railroad, as well as the county. And that said, as far as supporters, the number would be much greater than that. We've had a member of my staff who is out there making direct contacts with residents, business owners, community groups that that may benefit from the crossing, and and quite honestly, that was one of the areas in last year's application where we were told we could improve was the the depth and breadth of our community support. And so there were other areas that that we're working on as well, and so we are doing a very vigorous campaign for for letters of support, and I would offer if anyone in the community that's watching tonight would like to write a letter of support, please do not hesitate to email me at citymanager@livingstonmontana.org. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Gager?
Bad speed. As usual.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve Resolution fifty-one twenty-five and authorize the chair to sign the resolution authorizing the city managers to apply for DOT raised planning funds. Second.
A motion by Willage and a second by Lyons. Now, we'll go ahead and open it up to public comments. Anyone in the room like to make a comment on this agenda item? Feel free to come up to the podium.
Well, Steve, saying, were we allowed to comment on the proclamation at all?
In general, we don't, but did you wanna make?
Yeah.
A comment on?
You know, you know where the three drive-throughs are for American Bank? That is the Grand Hotel and it burned down in sixty-nine, right across the street where Bob's Army Store was the new Grand Cafe, and that was a totally Chinese family. That moved to Livingston in the sixties, and I just wanted to add that, and then comment that I've learned that if you turn an Oriental around backwards, they become disoriented. Just to keep that in mind.
Thank you for the.
Thank you for letting me share that little bit of local history, they were an authentic from China to Livingston, Montana, thank you very.
Give us your name.
Yeah, Steve Coons, uh one double oh seven Eagle Court. And that's gonna be a hard act to follow. So on this um. On this issue, I'd like to give you a little bit of background, uh George Denton and I did a lot of work on this a few years back. And uh, yeah, he himself was a lifetime or a career civil engineer and worked on many projects like this and. And um I learned a lot from him and. And we learned a um a couple of things that leave very brief along the way, and that is that uh. Uh the overpass is definitely your first choice, that's the way to go. And uh that's supported by the railroad in their document, great separation uh crossings. The emphasis is on an overpass. And then also the city of Livingston itself, I think there's a fold on once the overpass beat the underpass at least two to one. And um. And along the way, we, uh additional thing we learned is that an overpass. Requires a great deal of film material. And the city of Livingston has the film material, it's located next to Fisher pit out there. And it's really good stuff. And uh my main concern is that on the first go around the um. We bid off, uh we got a bunch of grants totaled over a million dollars. And but due to the fact that project didn't go ahead after ten-year window, we were on the hook for, for the whole mountain. And uh fortunately um. We were able to sidestep that bullet somehow, but nevertheless, my, my concern would be that. This particular grant, if it has the same type of restriction. I'm hoping that on this, on this time, the big stumbling block last time was money, we just couldn't get it, Quentin, you were there. And hopefully. In this go around, there might be some new sources that could make it happen, that would be super, yeah, super, and uh. But I wouldn't rule out, to dig it out, the old studies that have been done, perhaps those can be. Uh reviewed, save some time and save some money and, and uh. Use whatever resources we may have available. That's all I got.
Thanks, Steve.
You're very welcome.
Any other comments for this agenda item in the room?
Okay, uh Ruth Anick, and again, do I need to sign this again?
No. You're fine.
Um, I know better. I just want to speak to the fact that. Okay, that we've studied this and we studied this and we studied this. It's time to get it done. I beg of you, do this before I die. Because uh we uh. Now, I was on City Commission, I'm, I have, I've not heard the end of the plaque that I received because. Previous city manager and I um. In. Engaged in a lot of work to trying to get an underpass done. At the corner of uh. Um uh uh front street. What's that uh? Birth corner is, that's Demetary Road anyway.
Yeah, sure.
And uh um if we ran into some difficulties, I looked at a long time ago that, okay, we screwed up. We didn't get, we didn't get the thing done right, on the other hand. One of the problems that, thing, the things that we ran into is, you know, we made a specific trip to D.C. To talk to our, you know, talk to our representatives. And thought that was the way to go, only to discover that the um uh that uh. Uh that was right about the time the earmarks were removed. Now, as I understand that earmarks are back in just a different form, they don't call them earmarks exactly, but. Uh but there are ways of getting the money to do this. The other thing I look at is that. Uh we have to be serious about the fact that. No matter how you go about this, to, to do an, uh an, an overpass, underpass, any kind of crossing across the tracks, you have to deal with the railroad. But Burlington Northern has this, has this back again, I think they always had it, they just didn't tell anybody, but um. Uh Burlington Northern Santa Fe uh has the wherewithal and they know that um. To my way of thinking at least, is that. Um if we were able to get an overpass done and offer them the ability to close Fifth Street. Um they would jump at it, jump at the chance, because. Right now, they're boxed in between Fifth Street and East Crossing. And they want to be able to run longer trains. And they just really can't do it under their current circumstances. So um. The, the railroad can, needs to throw in on this, they, they just have to. Um that said, the first thing we do is. Get it, I get a good study. Get public input, well, we, we all know how that's gonna go around probably. But the sheer sim- sure and simple fact is that um it's gotta be a workable option for everybody, so um. Uh if we can. Take this study and run with it. But first, we have to get the money like everything else, so um. Um I already am thinking about. Three or four different organizations I'm gonna approach about writing letters of supports. Cause that's true, everybody in the community has got to throw, throw support to find this. Including the South Siders. Thanks.
Thanks, Rick. Anyone else in the room?
Am I allowed to comment on this?
Yeah, yeah, you can, you both, when, we'll have Patricia come up, you can come up next, Lyndy.
Just grab a tool for his calendar street. First of all, I welcome and appreciate the fact that the city manager for the first time. Has said he's going to get. Public in, input before a traffic study is done. Before it is a fait accompli, and that is truly appreciated, I, as you may know, I'm a big fan of public discourse. And public ideas, because to me, the collective intelligence is so much greater. Than the individual intelligence, so thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Also, um I appreciate the fact that there may be more than one. Option on the table for the public to look at. Rather than going and in it, saying, well, we now have the traffic state, now we know what we want. And then that's it for the public, then the public says, oh yes, well, I, again. Instead of making a personal attack or anything like that, it becomes a discussion of options. And this, the city did that very well on the Wellness Center, and I applaud the fact that. The city is taking this kind of stance. We've literally studied this thing to death, so we, we already know publicly. So much about this, and so the process by which the individual processes this and gets it. Back to the city manager can only add to the general information that we receive on this. Um I know that. My friend, uh what has not been able to get a. Meeting with the city manager yet, and I would encourage that because. Uh George Denton has had a stroke, but his mind is very good and he had. So much information that was not listened to the last time we talked about this, so. Would so appreciate it if he both, well, Steve Coons and George Denton could get a meeting with the city manager. And talk with the commissioners as well about what was learned in all this process. So welcome this. Welcome the fact that we are loo- looking at this seriously, welcome being so grateful. That the public is engaged before we do any kind of study, thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Lyndy.
Now, for as long as, that Lyndy gives them, for as long as we've had this issue going on as Livingston boroughs, which is wonderful. We've done enough studies and I hope we don't spend one more dime on a study. Um I literally drove to Laurel one day a few years back when this was a topic on the board and. They have in town, they have an overpass that's just beautiful downtown in the downtown district, you drive into town, get off the highway. And it's just a big, beautiful overpass, and that is the solution, because we have um two tracks and we're the southern route. We are, and I've counted up to ten coal trains from Coal Strip passing through Livingston. In a day, every day, and we can do an overpass without disruption to the um, to what's going on, without digging any soil or anything. I don't, you know, understand, and I know we need support, so we need more soil for the whole thing. And my thoughts are, I know they're looking at Sun Avenue and to come in out by the truck stop. Oh, where's that, anyway, that. Place that they all cars when they broke down, I'm sorry, grays automotive whistlers. Um but my thoughts are, if we just take and start the overpass right at Seventh Street, because people are, that's U.S. ten and eighty-nine, north and south. To start the overpass right at Seventh and keep it in town and come around, and it can be a beautiful structure, yes, there's gonna be people, they're gonna. Lose their view a little bit, but it won't affect, you know, seeing Mount Baldy and everything, but to me, that's a perfect solution. If someone has a heart issue, the surgeon puts the stent in the heart, not out here. And, and Seventh Street in my estimation is the heart, still the heart of Livingston. Whereas if we go further out, I don't know how much commercial we're looking at developing. And but I know it's residential and I know Livingston is growing to the west with all our new little subdivisions and stuff. But I think the Seventh Street Light is the perfect place to just put an overpass and just bring it back into town for everybody, was that three minutes?
Yep, that was your timer. Anyone in the room or online that would like to make public comment on this agenda item? Anyone online, feel free to come off mute. I don't see any, so we'll go ahead and close public comment. Uh commissioners, I heard one question and all of that, that I might ask the city manager and then if that's okay, and then we'll go on to deliberation. Uh Mister Gager, I heard a question um about the, a potential, there was another grant that had to be paid back if we didn't move forward, does this have that sort of. Feature to it, this grant?
Uh no, that, that situation was, was unique and, and distinctly different from this situation.
Thank you. Commissioners, celebration? Mr. Lyons?
I, I appreciate all the public input on this, I also appreciate the fact that. There's a lot of local knowledge and a, a lot of formal work that's gone into this um decades past um. And I just want to. Acknowledge that while also pointing out that. Taking advantage of. An existing funding source for. A planning study. Will help us. Will help our chances in going for other funding sources. If and when we get to an alternative that is deemed suitable to the commission and the community. I also want to make a distinction between planning work and a traffic study. Um having. Having taught land use and transportation planning in the past. There's a lot more to just the impacts of traffic that a crossing might have, that's critical to the overall impacts of what um. What increasing accessibility to the North Side might, might have, so um I hope that. And I, I also understand the scope of, of these, these planning grants to include. Considerations to land use and um and, you know, other um. Livability impacts that, that a, a crossing might have on our, on our community, so. You know, I see there uh being a benefit in, in continuing to study this, one, because this is uh a rare. And helpful um source for funding, two. There is more than just the traffic component that we, that we need to consider and understand particularly, you know, and this is an opportunity to do that in a um. With professional help. And then three, having an up-to-date. Um resource that we can lean on when we're going, hopefully going for funding opportunities to actually get this done. Having that up-to-date resource will, will only help our chances, so. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons, Mr. Willetts.
Uh thank you, thank you for the public's input on all of this, um I'm a South Sider. But uh I have lots of friends on the North Side, I've waited for trains and I've been through a full underpass. I feel like this is uh. Probably the fourth or fifth time we've taken this first step. But uh. It's the first time I've done it, so uh I'm very excited for. Seeing this through. So. That's what I think, like, I'm a instructor guy, I build things, I always build things. You have to start somewhere, you have to start with drawings, you have to start with studies, and uh. And this is the start, so let's continue this momentum to move forward and get the. Absolute best. And highest use of tax dollars for our citizens on the North Side.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, yes, this is necessary. Very necessary stuff, even though we've had. Plenty of studies in the past, um this is twenty twenty-four. Town is changing. And uh I'd be curious to see what the uh. What the study comes up with. Especially with location and the. And, and options, so I look at, I look forward to it with an open mind, thank you, I yield.
Thank you. Nice, Chair Nid.
Yeah, I think um we need to keep working for the North Side. I think my biggest concern is. That when this moves forward, all other North Side conversations tend to stop. Um we have three existing crossings for the North Side that could use improvements regardless of what happens with the raised grant. And we have many other North Side issues beyond a crossing. That's just my biggest concern, I don't want it to be that we work on this and we stop talking about the North Side until we find out about the raised grant.
Uh thank you uh for. For your thoughts, you've said a lot of things that I would have said, so I'm not gonna beat a dead horse, but what I am gonna say is I'm gonna thank. Uh. Manager uh. Gager uh for going at this again. Uh taking the feedback, redoing the grant. I know that there's several staff members helping on this, and thank you for that and helping us to put our best foot forward. Um and I, I feel optimistic with you that we will, we will succeed this time, so thank you. Anything else? We'll call, please.
Chair Kale.
Four.
Vice Chair Nid.
Four.
Mister Schwartz.
Four.
Mister Lyons.
Four.
Mister Will.
Four. Motion passes. All right, moving on uh to our next action item, action MB ordinance thirty forty-six. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana. Amending chapter thirty zoning of the Livingston Municipal Code by altering section thirty dot forty. As it relates to residential uses in the neighborhood commercial zoning district. Mr. Gauger.
Thank you, Chair Gale. The item before you is um ordinance three zero four six, which. Would be city staff and I originally crafted in response to state and the changes to zoning. And then you may recall in our last meeting, um I I notified you folks that uh two out of the three bills that we were responding to. Um, were the subject of an injunction that halted their implementation. And so uh based upon the the commission's direction in the last meeting. We have removed any changes that were related to two of the bills, SB three two three and SB five two eight. And uh only. Are proceeding at this time with the changes uh required to implement the the provisions of SB two four five. Uh also with the modifications that were um deliberated upon by the commission. And um so again, this is a pared down version of ordinance three zero four six. And because of the substantive nature of the changes, uh it I you may note that I have. Um had this as a first reading of the ordinance and so um we will uh start this process over again just due to the. Um substantive nature of the changes, so I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
I have none, none clarifying.
Clarifying question. Commissioner Lyons?
Hmm, yeah. Uh, on page sixty-four. Uh, the the new language. Any number of residential units may be established within the building that also contains commercial use. Um. When I go through. The ordinance on here, and I may have missed it. Uh, there isn't really any, I don't see reference to like bulk intensity. So I'm curious if if there are like limitations to the number of units. Like possible and have, if if that's constrained by, like what's the mechanism by which that's constrained? And how does that maybe compare to another zone like um? CBD or highway commercial?
Uh, that's a a great question, Commissioner, and um I I will say uh because of the. Reduced scope of this ordinance, um we are not touching any other sections. And so uh the last version of the ordinance actually did include the um the density tables um for each of the the districts. Because we weren't adjusting those, they fell off the the proposed or the ordinance that's presented to you. But I will say that the um the primary mechanism or limitate limiting factor that would. Uh reduce mass or bulk in the neighborhood commercial zone is the twenty-seven foot height restriction. Um, and so uh as opposed to the Central Business District, which does not have a height restriction. Or some other districts that have taller height restrictions, um it it occurs to us at a staff level that height will be the limiting factor in the size of of buildings in the neighborhood.
Okay. And where where would someone find that um height restriction?
Absolutely. I will bring up a copy of the municipal code and um point that. I was gonna say, I do believe it's table three zero four one, um for everyone watching at home, but yeah. Uh and I will, I'm happily uh share the screen and and bring that up for everyone at home. Um, so we can see the. So. Share the screen very quickly. Apologize for the delay here.
Thank you for pulling up.
So table thirty forty has has been reproduced in staff report is the list of uses. And then uh thirty forty-one gets into different density requirements. And you will see on the second portion of the. Or thirty forty-two here, neighborhood commercial has, you'll see at the bottom here, a twenty-seven foot height. Uh, restriction. There is no minimum lot size, and so height will be the limiting factor in this this zone.
Thank you so much for bringing us there. Appreciate that. Uh, it's as much for my benefit as as the public, so um. That's all I have required. I have questions. I appreciate it.
Other Commissioners, Commissioner Willetts?
I've made a hotel office of um Commissioner Lyons. With the word any. Any number, I said, I think is what it says, is any number of residential units may be established. Are there square footage? Minimums. So I'm I'm thinking density as opposed to height.
Um, there, there are some requirements in the building code. Um, and that would come into play, that would probably impact minimum size of the unit, just related to door clearances. And sure, noted bathrooms sizes and all that stuff, so.
Vice Chair Nuts? Clarify? I don't think that I have any clarifying questions. Entertained a motion?
I'll move to approve the first reading of ordinance thirty forty-six.
A motion by Lyons and a second by Schwartz. We'll go ahead and open it up to public comments. Um, so if uh anyone has public comments on this agenda item, feel free to come on up to the podium. Anyone online? If you would like to make public comment and you're online, please feel free to just come off mute. Being none. We'll go ahead and close public comments. Mr. Comment celebration? Commissioner Schwartz?
Um, I'll just say that. First of all, definitely staff and putting this all all together, we really spent a lot of time on us uh at the last um. Last meeting and uh. Let's say that's the key of our fellow commissioner, uh Mr. Lyons and staff, I. I think this looks very good. I'll yield.
Thank you. Commissioner Lyons?
Ditto to my fellow Commissioner Schwartz. Particularly the part that referenced my expertise. Um, you hammered this out. Uh, but you know, I think that um Commissioner Willetts and I and probably members, other members of the public. When you read any number of residential units, it makes you nervous. Um, but uh I'm satisfied by um the explanation of the. The limiting factor on that number of units being um height. You know, the the way to intensify density of residential units is to build vertically. Um, and if there is a. A constraint on that um. On that height that's already within the um the rest of the restrictions on in on that zone. Then I'm not worried that there will be um. Levels of intensity of of residential development in that zone that are beyond what's already been. Adjudic- adjudicated in the development of that um that ordinance, so. But you know, I think really anytime that there's a an ability also to. Incorporate residential units with with commercial development, that's a positive for our community as well. We heard about issues related to um, you know, lack of of. Commercial retail and other kind of services on the North Side. And part of the reason for that is a a former zoning code that prohibited that kind of that kind of use. Um, and so this is a uh. Really a modern approach to zoning that I think um has the potential overtime to alleviate some of. Um, the issues of of segregated land uses where you can, you go only to downtown to get. To get cer- certain services. I think as our community continues to expand um geographically. We need to allow for the creation of new nodes of commercial activity, and this is a one way that that can be facilitated. So um, all yours there.
Thank you. Commissioner Willetts?
Uh, I will also co-sign Commissioner Lyons's expertise. You are certainly the subject matter expert on this. Yeah, I feel that uh the adding the residential units without the the burdensome requirement of being the business owner. Is uh probably the good, the good ma- uh motion to make on that. And I appreciate all of the work that the staff has done to put this together. Thank you very much, I yield.
Vice Chair Nuts? My per- my perspective is a little bit different. Um, the North Side's or the. Neighborhood commercial zone is only um currently on the North Side of the tracks. And this isn't adding commercial, this is adding residential. So it's not changing the um impact of commercial on the North Side. And I've just, just looking at the use table and the um. The residential. Table and permits, et cetera. Um, when the state mandated that we change this zone. It's really making. Our neighborhood commercial zone very similar to the mixed use zone that we already had. Um, that we recently put in just within the last couple of years. And there's not a great distinction between those two zones now. Um, which is also similar in some ways to the highway commercial zone. So I guess my concern is. Not so much for the updates. I appreciate all the time that staff put into the um. Zoning ordinance, and I appreciate the conversations from the commission, but the state mandates are really making many of our zones quite similar. So it's sort of taking away the power of any single zone by shaping our community um long term through land use law. Because now we have so many zones that are very similar. So my hope is that when we do this overhaul over the next year, we can really revisit these zones um with a critical mindset. And think about where we're trying to go as a community and how we might refine zoning and allowed uses. To get to where we're going, because right now we have three zones that are almost the same. I yield.
Thank you. I think that's a really good point. Thank you for bringing that up, and I think that we will have the opportunity to. Hopefully we'll have the opportunity to address some of that in this zoning update. Um. I would just say that I'm, you know, I think that as as this commission and some of the commissions before us, I'm really proud that we've kind of moved. Forward a little more quickly than other communities and really work to address our housing issues as best we can from our side of the table. Um, and you know, really looking and listening to our community, particularly through what was said in the growth policy and and trying to put those things into place. Um, I'm looking forward to this zoning update so that we can achieve some of those things. Um, first, that's not what we're talking about at the moment. Uh, so uh, thank you for all of your deliberation and discussion. Thank you for the. City staff for walking us through this. I know it's taken a couple of go rounds because of the changes with just with uh. The last year, so we'll look forward to additional conversations about these other two bills um as. This, these things move forward. Um, are we ready to vote?
Sure.
Roll call, please.
Chair Gale.
Four.
Vice Chair Nuts.
Four.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Four.
Commissioner Lyons.
Four.
Commissioner Williams.
Four.
Most curious. I don't think I'm as quick with the agenda as you are.
Give it time. You will be. I have total confidence in your ability to flip through the packet.
All right, action item C ordinance thirty forty-nine. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, amending section thirty point one three. Of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled Highway Zoning Map of the City of Livingston. By zoning property located at five two eight four US Highway eighty-nine South, recently annexed, generally known as R Y Timber. As light industrial. Mr. Gauger.
Thank you, Chair Gale. The item before you is a secondary uh action to an action that the commission took in November of. Twenty twenty-three to annex in the R Y Timber property. And now we uh under state code have the responsibility to uh zone the the newly annexed land. And staff recommendation that was endorsed by the uh then Livingston Zoning Commission at a meeting in December. Was um to annex or excuse me, to zone the annexed property as light industrial. And as the staff report makes clear, um there are several reasons why uh staff recommended the light industrial zoning. And the uh zoning commission uh concurred first and foremost is uh is table thirty forty, the the list of allowed uses. And um while the uh the the growth policies, uh extraterritorial jurisdiction section. Uh, recommended zoning this uh property neighborhood commercial. The um, the the staff recommendation deviated from that slightly for uh two reasons. And and primarily the uh the allowed uses, uh the current use would not be allowed in the um neighborhood commercial zone. And so um, uh you know, while there are uh allowances for pre-existing non-conforming uses. Uh, the the nature of this use and the amount of investment that is being uh put into the property. Um, led us to to consider uh a a use that or a a zone that would allow the current use. And and then secondarily, um the, as you folks just acted upon, the state has required. Uh residential zoning in commercial districts um for units of or structures of five units or more. And upon review of the the growth policy. Uh, at the time that it was formulated and the neighborhood commercial recommendation was made, it uh it seemed to us at a staff level that. Uh, the community was um, was not necessarily interested in residential uses on on that property. Um, potentially given the proximity to the river. And so uh the light industrial does not allow residential uses, and so um that was our recommendation. I'll welcome up our uh planning director Jennifer Severson to um walk you through some of the the specifics of her recommendation in a little bit more detail.
Thank you.
And then after that, we'll stand for any questions that uh that you may have, so. Director Severson.
Good evening. Um, I'm gonna try to make this brief. Um. As as Grant mentioned, we are deviating slightly from what the growth policy recommends. Um, this is a map uh highlighted in yellow of the annex parcel. Um, I believe it's discussed in the staff rec, but just a reminder that. The entirety of the R Y Timber parcel or the property known as R Y Timber now owned by Sun Mac Lumber. Um, was not actually annexed into the city, just the northern part. So this, this doesn't represent the entire property, but it does now represent what is within city limits. Um, that we are recommending um the zoning for. Uh, so just summary of why, any um recent annexation, obviously, we don't have city zoning um assigned to this. And we are required to do so, I believe it's within ninety days of annexation. The current use um is, we don't, our code does not specify uh timber manufacturing. It discusses uh general manufacturing. I I would consider this a a similar use, so that's what we're. Um likening this to, so um it's used for timber manufacturing, outside storage mainly of raw timber on this property. Um, and then this is a growth policy map. I apologize that it is a little um fuzzy. Uh, but this is just showing you that the the lighter red, indeed the neighborhood commercial, is what the growth policy. Uh, but this is just showing you that the the lighter red, indeed the neighborhood commercial, is what the growth policy recommends. For this property. However, um and and just a reminder, so neighborhood commercial um is a district that is intended to primarily provide for community retail services. Office facilities or convenience retail developments. And I also realize that um. So timber manufacturing general is not allowed. Um, as Grant mentioned, that would be previous uses, pre-existing uses. Um, would be illegal non-conforming use. Um, however, if that use were to cease for more than a year. Any future use of the property would have to comply with the zoning district it's within. Um, or. A variance or rezoning requested. The recommended zoning is light industrial. That is not actually what light industrial is intended for. Apologize, light industrial. As it says in your staff report, is a district intended to accommodate all types of light industry, including those defined as light manufacturing, as well as business and professional offices. Um, so just going through in your staff report, I I've um. Put supporting um documentation or um criteria evaluation for. Um, what we are required to look for for um new zoning properties, zoning regulations uh according to Montana code annotated. As as in your staff report, I believe that this recommended zoning of light industrial compiles, um it fills the criteria. For zoning, um and so that is why we are recommending this. Um. I said I would be brief. Uh, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. If you want me to discuss one in particular, I'd have to do that too.
Commissioners.
That was good.
No questions for Jen? Questions for city manager?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, so. I'm curious, I mentioned this last time, R Y Timber. Was here and we talked about R Y Timber, that some of the folks that lived downwind. Were impacted when the business was running previously. The business stopped running, as we all know. Well, it changed hands and started back up again. And our community members that live downwind are being impacted again. And so I'm curious, um. You know, the process of like who enforces making sure that R Y Timber isn't. Unintentionally spreading debris across neighborhoods. We know that when there was a fire. There were other things that were spread across the neighborhood that were very scary for the people who lived there. And so I'm just curious with. That zone, that use, that location being upwind from. The south side. How do we keep our people safe in our community and not exposed to the industry?
Uh, in the state of Montana, air quality is regulated by the Department of Environmental Quality. And so um. While I have uh, I have heard similar sentiment from um from community members to to what you just referenced. Um, the city does have certain air quality monitors in place in in parts of the of the city. Um, I believe our our nearest monitor is about seven, maybe eight blocks from um the edge of the facility. And so um we have observed that in the in the restart. Um. We have not noticed any difference in the in the air quality that's being picked up by the monitor. Uh, but that said, I'm I'm happy to reach out to the Department of Environmental Quality and uh learn more about services they offer to communities to ensure. Uh, air quality uh in in areas related to industrial activity.
And for folks that are impacted, what um. Who's the best contact at the city for them to like share? I know I've gotten like pictures before, like people have sent me things and I've passed them along, but. All the better if they can. I mean, it's fine to include the commission and also they don't need to go through the commission, right? They can just come to city staff. Is there like a best person or department?
I I would recommend that people bring those concerns directly to me and um my, again, my email is citymanager@livingstonmotana.org.
Okay, I just wanted to. Make sure, because now everybody's comfortable speaking publicly, so they sometimes come to commissioners, but I address it while it's on the agenda. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions?
I I have one. Um. Are there? In this zone, I mean, obviously, you know, there's buildings already there and. There's storage, but if for some reason this does go away and something else is put in that location, are there set river setbacks? Is there a setback from the river? When it comes to any human development?
Uh, I will turn it over to the planning director.
Um, I feel that I believe in the packets that the uh attachment five. Um, is a map of the floodplain, so along um Furman Creek. There is regulatory floodplain, it's a small sliver, so you um any development within that floodplain would have to comply with the requirements. Uh, for floodproofing, um it's currently mapped as regulatory floodplain, not floodway. You know, there is a floodplain study ongoing right now. Um. That could change that to floodway. If it were changed to floodway, there is no development in the floodway. Um, so uh certain below grade or minimal impact uh. Grading activities can happen, but no structures, no no new structures. And right now, there are no structures, I believe, in in that area. There's nothing in the floodplain. Did that?
Yes. Any other questions? Clarifying questions? We can, someone would like, we can do a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve um ordinance three zero four nine. Commend the city of Livingston zoning code section three zero point one three related to official zoning map. And I'll have to write the chair's sign, and we're gonna just three zero four nine.
Oh, a second.
All second.
It's ahead of motion by Schwartz and a second by which. Let's go ahead and open it up to public comments. We'll start in the room. Anyone in the room that would like to make public comment? On ordinance thirty forty-nine, please come on up to the podium. Anyone in the room?
I'm actually gonna make a comment.
Okay.
For Titanic and two twenty West Montana. Um. One of the things I think about is I've been watching the commission a little while and. I am so impressed that we're finally doing some things that should have been done a long time ago. And um, and I think this is probably an example of that. But I do look at at it. Um, Commissioner Kale's uh comment about setback from the from the river. Um, then kind of like, there's a whole lot about. Where R Y Timber is located and and right along the river there and stuff. That um makes me think that there's. Now, what's, what are they called? The law of unintended consequences, you know? Um, I uh I certainly hope that uh you can keep a handle on that. Uh, development because. Because I have a feeling that they uh that. I have a feeling that the lumber mill itself, it's not long term, it's not a long term, nots, not gonna sustain itself. And so there's gonna be some, something else that's gonna happen. And uh, so I just. I'm I'm glad to see that we're, that the city is finally doing things like annexing uh properties and. And uh sections that have long since needed to come into the city. But um, but um, knowing just exactly what the consequences of those are gonna be. There's something else. Um, I myself, for example, um. Was out to um subway of all places, don't go there very often, but I was out to the sub- the subway. And uh and needed to let my dog out. And uh and so often we stepped around, we went to their little parking lot out back. Uh, I was stunned to realize that you can walk right through this hedge and be in the lumber mill. Um, so how that, how how that's contained and and uh. And uh managed is kind of questionable to me, but. That's all.
Thank you, Rick. Anyone else in the room? All right, let's go online. Anyone online would like to make a public comment? Feel free to come off mute and. Give your name and address.
Jonathan Hedinger, one eleven North C Street in Livingston. Um, I just wanted to. Um, well, I'd like to echo Rick's concerns about um how if the about what might happen in the future. Um, that this uh if the timber operation ceases. That a uh light industrial zoning allows anything light industrial to come into play right next to the river. And I think that's a little bit um concerning, and I think that um. I just am a little bit, I'm more concerned about the um inconsistency with the future land use map. Um, of the growth policy. I think that um the community spent a lot of time creating that. And um, if you're gonna do something inconsistent with the. With that, I think that you should probably consider a future land use map amendment rather than. And then do a zoning change. I just worry about the precedent that that sets. Um, and but I do think that neighborhood commercial is a more consistent um. With what the community wants and would um. And doesn't have the same concerns and be next to the river that light industrial might. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online? Like to make a comment? Feel free to come off mute, give your name. I'll ask in the room one more time. Anyone in the room or online? All right, we'll close public comment. Commissioners. Commissioner Schwartz.
Um. Regarding Mister Heninger's uh last statements, um if Jen. Um, Mister Gager, if Jen could clarify, um we're only doing light industrial. For this because it's grandfather, as it is, being a uh. A lumber mill. Basically, but once it ceases operation as a lumber, timber, timber manufacturing. Through a cease operations for a longer one year, it resort uh resort. Goes back to neighborhood commercial, correct?
No, um for for clarification, the the recommendation is to zone this property as light industrial until such time. It is as it is actively rezoned by the city commission. And and if I if I may, I I do recognize that I. Uh, kind of. May have glanced over and not provided in enough detail. Um, as as you recall, the neighborhood commercial zone. Effective uh January one of twenty twenty-four, uh we have to allow uh residential structures of more than five units. By right as an allowed use. And so that is a a rather significant change in the neighborhood commercial zone. From the time that the future land use map was adopted in the in the growth policy and and actually as. As uh Chair Nudes pointed out in her comments on the on the last item, uh the the statement it mandated change actually brings neighborhood. Commercial very close to matching uh highway commercial. Uses and and the adjacent uses are all zoned highway commercial. And so the inference from staff was that. Neighborhood commercial was specifically selected because there was no residential as an allowed use on the river. Um, whereas, you know, it seemed as if the community had truly wanted that uh highway commercial, which is the adjacent zone. Um, of properties would have likely been selected. A little bit of uh kind of conjecture on our part, but somewhat informed by. The conversations that that we researched.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Lyons.
Um, I will share a um. A reticence or a, you know, a concern. For thinking about what might become of the land. In a future where it's not being used as a as a lumber lumber mill. And I think that if one were to. Read. This whole um. Effort. Cynically, one would expect. A push for a. A land, a land use or a, you know, zoning designation that allowed for residential uses. Because if if you look at the past five years in Livingston. All of the development activity has been around residential development. So if we thought that. You know, there were. An actor coming in from out of town with the intention of doing something. Different than what they're what they're telling us they're gonna do, we'd expect that they'd be looking for. Um, a zoning designation that allows for residential uses, which light industrial does not. Um, I really appreciate uh Mister Gager's uh. Description of of kind of how today's circumstances are different from the circumstances in which we develop the future land use map. Um, and just how uh. Just how different neighborhood commercial is today than it was when um. When it was selected for the future land use map when we were doing the growth policy process. So, you know, I, again, I. I think about the future that way, and I think about the future in terms of, you know, what what could um. How could someone game our system to um, you know, to to get the most profit out of um. Uh, their. Their land speculation, and I don't see this uh. As um the logical play, if you're if you're thinking about it cynically. So um. That said, when I look at the, the. The allowable uses, the can put the really, really, really helpful um. Comparison uh on page seventy-six, it talks about sixty uses total, thirty-two uses in common. Um, nine uses require a special exception for neighborhood commercial, but are allowed by right. And light industrial. If you if you look at it strictly uh empirically. You see that light industrial is actually a little bit more permissive than neighborhood commercial is. With the very large exception of that residential component. So. You know, it's the question that we're really asking ourselves here is. What kind of activity do we see as most suitable? Along the river or in this specific location? And you know, I think um. Those of us who. Who care for the ecological integrity of the river would like to see as little development along the river as possible. And um, when. When you look at it by the numbers. It's maybe arguable to which which one of these designations, neighborhood commercial or light industrial. Um, is most restrictive. Um, but I think that I think really what it boils down to are like the the biggest difference between those two. Um, has to do with with the allowance of residential and neighborhood commercial and and the allow. And the allowance of of now high intensity um residential and neighborhood commercial. So. Um. That was a lot. And um. I don't think. A quick synthesis of my of my comments isn't coming immediately to mind, so um I'm not gonna recap what I just shared. Um, other than, you know, it's not, it's not an easy decision. Um, and I think that there are kind of compromises involved. Options between neighborhood commercial or light industrial. Um. Um, I'll just add one more point, which is that I, I, I do appreciate Vice Chair Nudes' concern for, uh, for air quality for, you know, we've, we've been talking about the poorer residents on, on our side, but there are folks on the south side that have issues as well. So I appreciate your, your concern on both sides of the track.
Commissioner Willis?
Yeah, um, so I appreciate the, um, desire to, at least as it currently stands, not have, uh, residential constructed or permitted in a lumberyard. And it could possibly be that, which neighborhood commercial, if that's where they wanted to go by law. Um, and so I'm looking at this as a hub potentially. Say the lumberyard disappears in, in some time, uh, as a job and, uh, employment hub for the city. Uh, there's, I don't know how many acres this thing is, but, um, I'm familiar with some light industrial and in other cities that are professional offices, um, small, small manufacturing, you know, making a trailer for a boat type of thing. Um, a- and they all provide jobs. And that's also what our city needs is jobs. Um, so I look at this as a possibility, um, for a life safety and floods. And we'll see what the Army Corps of Engineers says with the, with the new flood survey, but also with having a potential for, um, if it is going to be developed eventually, developed into a position where there could be two, three, four hundred jobs in that area of all different types of flavors. Um, so I, I think it's great. I yield.
Thank you. Vice Chair Nudes.
So we're to the deliberative portion of the program. It's amazing when you're not chair that you don't have to pay attention.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Thank you for your service. It's nice. So I have to think about everything at once.
Realizing.
It's a difference, right?
And I appreciate you for the last two years. I will tell you that.
Remember how I said I didn't have a question?
Yeah.
I do have a question, actually. Um, can we revisit the, the map that Director Stevenson is talking about with, um, flood risk? Well, Mr. Gager's pulling that up. I do want to just say how much I appreciate the distinctions in the use table. That was the first time I've seen that in a staff report. And I really like it. And I don't know if Jen can hear me. So I want to make sure that she hears me say how much I really like what you did with the use table. It makes it so much easier to follow along with the, seeing your thinking. So thank you for doing that for us. Would it be possible?
I'll come on the indirect page. I'm sorry.
Would it be possible for you to just, um, recap that map a little bit? Some of the floodplain maps are not intuitive to me and probably lots of people. The difference between all of the designations, where we are today and what you expect we might see post analysis. It always take.
Yeah.
I think you have to be a planner to like be able to be fluent. Pretty sure.
Yeah, really. Both my managers know this too, but, um, that's why I'm not gonna be certified. Um, this actually, I, I failed to mention one quite important part. This is also in the regulatory floodplain. This is actually in the regulatory floodway for the Yellowstone. So the northern little sliver of the property, Grant, if you can show kind of near I ninety. Yeah, that is no development there. I also noticed when I looked back at this online, and I apologize, it's been a little bit since I've, I've looked at these maps and put this together. Um, there is an existing structure in the Billman Creek Regulatory Floodway or Floodplain, sorry. Um, and so, uh, it, it, um, I can't remember. Yeah, it's already in there. Uh, it was not improved. I don't believe it was one of the fire impacted. So it wasn't improved beyond a level that would have required floodproofing. Um, substantial improvements for FEMA, uh, regulatory floodplain is anything over fifty percent of the current value of a structure. Um, and so that is why, but anything future that were to go in there, according to this map as it is now, and there's no guarantee it will remain this way, um, would any, any new structures, um, or any, let's say they wanted to expand their operations, and this is totally hypothetical, and they wanted to improve one of the existing structures in the floodplain, the regulatory floodplain that you see there. Um, if it's beyond fifty percent of the current value, then they would have to, um, floodproof it according to FEMA regulations and also, um, obtain a floodplain development permit from me.
And that's in this.
That's the blue. That's off of Billman. It kind of runs. Yeah. So the floodway, you can tell that there's, I just by looking at this map, I can tell you without even having been down there that there's th- there's probably a pretty significant, um, topography change between the Yellowstone River and where that is, which is why it goes straight from floodway to nothing. Um, that's typically what that means. Um, so Billman Creek right now really is the only regulatory in that blue, that light blue. Um, and it's actually all south of Billman. Actually, if you look at that, because those, the tree line is just north, if you look in your packet of where the annexation is, but all the regulatory floodplain is south on, of Billman onto the property. And again, a lot of that is floodplain mapping is all tied to elevation.
So, so can we just pause for a moment? I, I'm having a hard time getting oriented on this map. Can you identify some landmarks? Like where was Rick Van Aken walking his dog? By subway. It's what I really wanted to know.
That is, this is Centennial Avenue here. Cursor is here.
Thank you.
And this actually has two maps on it, Grant, and that might be why.
I think that is why.
Yeah.
Oh, I can see.
Sorry.
Sorry, I'm ban away.
Doing a great job.
So, um, yeah, uh, Mr. Van Aken was about here.
So.
Yeah, we're the finished product.
About, can you use your, your whatever cursor to like show us the actual land that we're talking about annexing? Cause this is not all of our liking.
Exactly. So.
Or not annexing, I'm sorry, zoning.
Zoning, exactly. So where my cursor is now in the light blue section about midway down on the left side, uh, that is the entryway that people would take to pick up firewood or otherwise deliver logs or pick up logs from the, the facility. And the, uh, this air, this road right here, uh, is Travertine Lane that my cursor is on. The property line is right about, uh, just barely north of Travertine Lane and moves across uh, in this direction and then has a little area where it juts down approximately here, back up and then over to the river that way, if that makes sense. Roughly speaking.
Okay. So that matches that like sort of dash line matches the top perimeter of the red dash line in the fallout. And so what we're seeing from what the director is saying is that it's not in the regulatory floodway right now. But it may be. And if it is, it'll go through an entire process if they want to redevelop that you'll have to, this, whoever's involved that regulates the floodplain and also you will have to give a permit. Is that what I'm understanding? Or I'm understanding anything close to the?
Any development. The last thing you said kind of threw me because there, there is there, there is a portion of this property that is in the regulatory floodplain for Billman Creek.
Yeah, it's a special flood hazard, the light blue. That is regular.
It's always like all of the like. Please do.
If you look at where, um, where the trees are, that's Billman Creek. You see the trees underneath this light blue layer.
Yeah.
So if you go over here, that's where that is.
That's what I needed.
Across the road is starting this property. So because again, I'm guessing the elevation here is higher, the floodplain uh, goes to the south. So it goes into this property right here. You see this little building right here.
Thank you. That's what I needed.
Sorry, I should have drawn a line.
No, it's not. This is like every single time.
Way right there.
Say that one more time.
A little tiny bit of floodway right there.
Yeah.
Mean nothing. That, that, I mean, that means that nothing can be developed there. There is nothing there.
So you're saying like when we do the map, that whatever color it is that's diagonal shading and the blue, all that's gonna potentially change, which you don't know.
Honestly, I, I wouldn't necessarily expect it too much here. And again, I, I don't know about this. Um, just because of the, the elevation difference.
Okay, thank you.
But, yeah, it could change.
Thank you. That's what I needed. So it's like a fair chunk of the property is shaded, which is the important part.
A lot of the storage, I believe, of the raw lumber is down here, which is the kind of unannexed portion.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Um, sorry to put you through that. Thank you. Um, okay, so what I'm thinking about, um, I appreciate all the comments that all the other commissioners have made. Also, I appreciate, um, there is this section that was in the staff report, also identifying the existing surrounding businesses would get, which gets at what Commissioner Willis, I think, was saying too, um, the existing businesses like the vet clinic, hotel, the retail, um, so the large scale retail would not be allowed in the neighborhood commercial. Um, but that are allowed uses in light industrial. So I think there's like a lot of compatible land use things that we're thinking about right now. Um, one thing that I'm thinking about when we're talking about flooding or the potential of flooding is the significant change to neighborhood commercial, um, after tonight. And while this was the first reading, but after the state, um, mandated that we change it. And risk, like thinking about what's our responsibility when we think about risk, um, human health and safety and I'm not excited about anything flooding, not excited about industrial spaces being flooded. And I'm also not excited about residents being flooded. And also where's the lowest risk for human health? Is it flooding where lumber is stored? Or is it flooding high density residential area? Um, I think that's like another thing that I'm considering, listening to all the deliberation. I'm interested, you know, in what other commissioners have to say about that too, like the difference between high density uh, in a, in a flood prone area versus businesses, um, knowing that it's an intense use either way.
Well, isn't that why we're looking at light industrial closer snow?
Yeah, but that we haven't explicitly talked about the risk of flooding different zones. And that's, I think, what we're gonna be up against. This conversation is like building near the river.
Right, but that's not.
Right, but if we went neighborhood, if we went neighborhood commercial, now it could be
Right.
pretty high density and like.
But we're now right now.
No, but that's, I think some of what's been brought up tonight was, yep, was, um, if we went with the future land use map, um, as the growth policy was written, when those zones were written, as they were written, neighborhood commercial was different than what it is today. The most significant difference being res, the allowed use of residential, high density residential. Um, it's not the only difference, but it's the same.
But if this is the change from light industrial, we zone it, light industrial, that, we'd have to go through the rezoning process anyway.
We're in it. That's what we're doing right now.
Right now. So we would be zoning right now. If we move forward, we're gonna zone it light and.
Light industrial, right.
But some folks are saying like the land use map says neighborhood commercial, so we should consider that. And I think that's like
Okay, I see where.
From a couple of comment and then like from other commissioners, sort of like the tension between.
Yeah, well, I'm not.
So I'm thinking about like, if it floods again, like we saw.
Right, and this is fifteen years old too.
Right, and we all lived here. We all lived here. Um, it flooded. We, um, I don't, we don't need to relive that. We knew what the risk was. We know that there was serious risk to some of your neighborhoods, actually. Um, what does that mean if we're putting high density in an area?
Right.
Where it, I mean, I remember that, my memory is that this was, there was a lot of water.
Oh, yeah.
So what does it mean if it's a lot of water and people are on it? So that's.
A lot of people were affected upstream.
Right.
From that, you know.
Right.
They had to rebuild, so.
So that's what I'm thinking about in terms of like risk, like not ideal to flood light industrial. That's not great for the environment or the businesses and also not great to put high density in an area that could potentially flood. Obviously, the map and all the things the director said, like impact building in that area and still it's different when it's people who live there all the time versus like an industry. So that's what I'm thinking about. I don't have the answer. I'm just like throwing it out because we haven't had that conversation.
I yield.
Okay. Can I? And then, is that okay? Um, thank you for, for all of that. And, um, I was really looking forward to hearing from, actually from you, Vice Chair Nudes, and you, Commissioner Lyons, because you sat through all of these growth policy conversations. I mean, I, I attended a lot of those meetings, but was curious to hear from you, like what you were thinking about, maybe what, what you felt the intent was when you all created this land use map, this future land use map and, you know, what we're looking at now. Um, and I wondered if it was, you know, that we didn't want residential there by the river. Um, so I would love to kind of hear from you all in a moment, hear about, you know, if you feel like we're in that right, if you're kind of, if we're headed in that right direction. I'm a little, I, I think Jonathan brought up something that sort of struck me, which was if we do do something different, some of the future land use map is saying, are we setting some sort of a precedent? Do we need to update the future land use map? Um, so I was curious about what the thoughts were, um, that Mr., Mr. Gager or if Jen, you know, was interested in, in answering that, is there, is that something that we need to consider?
Um, I, you know, that's a, a very fair question. And, um, that is a bit of a, uh, a bit of a stylistic preference. Um, I do know that there are some cities in the state of Montana that don't do, um, anything without updating their growth policy to reflect that. And, um, however, uh, we do recognize that, um, we're in a bit of a unique situation with this property. Uh, because this was an annexation by petition, we were actually asked by the property owner to annex this. And under, uh, that provision of, of Montana code annotated, we have ninety days to, um, establish what the zoning of, of the parcel is. And so, um, uh, you know, I, I, I never like to do things in a way that, um, you know, suppresses public comment and public inputs, but there are times when we are, uh, motivated by the requirements of Montana code annotated act expeditiously. And, and this is one of the situations.
I thank you for that. Um, and then to just kind of Vice Chair Nudes to sort of like hit on, on what you were speaking of too, and, and, and Commissioner Willis. You know, since the flood, we've, I think I've had a lot of conversations and sat in a lot of economic development meetings, um, with different groups. And there's always been this discussion about diversifying our economy. Um, you know, that we, we tend to be heavily a tourist economy. And when something goes bad, then we are um, stuck, right? Because those are the businesses that are affected. And so the idea of having a place that we can diversify the economy, particularly with light industry and light manufacturing, um, has been, from some of the research that I've done, it's been like the thing that has really helped other communities, um, to diversify. Um, I also think about residential and, and high density residential in those areas and in, in general, you know, a lot of high density residential tends to be a certain class of folks. And I, and, and to think that we're putting folks in in danger of flood, you know, that will be especially impacted or may not be able to rebound as easily. Um, is, is frightening. Um, again, I don't want to see anybody flood either, but you know, that's the potential. My, my hope also is that with the new flood map. you know, that's the potential. My my hope also is that with the new flood maps that will come out for the Army Corps that you know, that it's going to make it more difficult for people to build anything close to the river. Those are my thoughts. Commissioner Lyons, I know you have.
I I appreciate Vice Chair Nudes's framing in terms of of risk. And kind of what the what the different risk scenarios are given the different um land use designations. I think that um when it comes to light industrial, it's really hard to envision particularly like in what the environmental risk might be. And I think that, you know, you could construe, you could, you know, conjure up a a use that would have a very high potential environmental risk on with with an industrial application. When you compare that environmental risk to only the environmental risk of, you know, the other side of the coin of um high intensity residential. There are, there are industrial uses that could pose a greater environmental risk in in the case of. If you're thinking about risk in terms of impact to individual interests, there probably isn't a a riskier scenario than to have high intensity residential development there, right? There's, that's the, that's the, that's the most individual concentration of individual interests that you could, that you could use with that land. So when you're thinking about it in terms of individual interest, there's no way that you could think of a light industrial scenario that would have that would pose that much risk individual interest as as the uh high intensity residential. So that's kind of my response to to that question you posed to to um the commissioners. I had another point, but it's it's escaped me and it's probably better for everybody, so.
Other commissioners?
I'll speak for a little risk.
Commissioner Willich.
A little more one dollar words about it, but I'm a pretty risk adverse person and when the water level comes up in the future, maybe in a thousand years, sure, a thousand year flood, uh, which is possible, uh, it's far more risk adverse to not have anybody on that property at two o'clock in the morning or three o'clock in the morning. And a building full of tools and materials that floods is a far easier pill to swallow. Maybe not for the insurance companies, but for us as a city than than trying to figure out how to get seventy five people, families out of that same property. And so while I I get that we have, you know, basically what I'm trying to say is if somebody wants to put uh uh residential up there, uh, we'll have to have that conversation again with a zoning request, a zoning change request. And so for the for the moment, with the data that we have in front of us, with a request from the property owner, I think light industrial seems like the the best fitting shoe for this foot.
Since Commissioner Lyons invited the conversation of individual interests. I'm actually thinking about public interest. So for the five of us were on the commission when it, before it happened. And I'm thinking about like the public good and what does that mean? Of course, it means something different to everyone, but and impacts on the public at large and our government also, because that's what we have jurisdiction over, really. And that's really all we have jurisdiction over, right? Is like how we respond as a local government. And what does it mean when we have um a high risk situation that impacts a great number of people in our community? And we have limited resources to serve those people. So how do we make it? It's it's almost like a sustainability and government conversation that like I'm thinking about now, like individual interest versus public interest. So like limited goods, maximum benefit to the community. What do we put here that we can actually um meet the needs of the citizens in a high risk scenario? So thank you for inviting me to think about public versus individual interest. Um, it causes me to lean in the direction and the impossible, the impossible terrible risk scenarios that we can all imagine where they're all very bad and there's no good outcome. From a sustainability and government perspective, sustainability being also a thing in the growth policy. I lean towards Commissioner Willich's point of um best use of the land and also best, maybe not best use of the land, but best use of government resources. Um, in the unthinkable situation that we all experienced when we lived here just a few years ago. And and to get to your point, um Chair Cale, about what were we talking about at the growth policy meeting? We talked about so much with the future land use map that we brought it back for one or two meetings and it was still the subject of other meetings. I I think that I don't remember specifically um what we talked about that day. Because we had so many hours of conversations, but I do know we were thinking of all the things that we've talked about tonight in the context of that space. Um, one concern I have about opening up the growth policy is that opening up the map potentially means opening up a much larger conversation. This was the thing that took probably considerably more time relative to the whole package. This bit of the growth policy, this one or two pages of maps took considerably more time than any other part of the entire growth policy. And so my concern is if we open this up, we will not reach the critical deadline by which we need to zone this. And also we passed it in June twenty twenty one. We're in twenty twenty four now. Um, we got a late start to implementing it for lots of reasons. We're implementing it now. So what does it mean if we open it up while we're just getting to the meat of it? It could mean, right? It could mean that we stop everything that we're doing right now to implement it. And that's my concern. Is I don't, like, we're finally making progress. We had a whole bunch of things happen that delayed that progress. I think that the, I think that our community wants us, wanted us to be sprinting the minute we passed it and we weren't able to. Now we are. I don't want to spoke jam. Where we're at by opening up the growth policy when it won't be long and we'll be updating the growth policy because we have to do it every five years.
You yield.
I do yield. Thank you.
Anything else? Are we ready for a vote?
I am.
On the other discussion? Right, roll call please.
Chair Cale.
Four.
Vice Chair Nudes.
Four.
Mr. Schwartz.
Four.
Mr. Lyons.
Four.
Mr. Willich.
Four.
Motion passes.
Madam Chair.
Was just going there. Can I have a motion for? Okay.
For German or uh?
Yeah. I'm second.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for a ten minute break. Seven thirty, we will be back at seven forty. Thank you. Right, I'm going to call us back into session. Uh, it's seven forty three. Uh, so welcome everyone back and we'll go ahead and continue. Um, we are now on to action item D. Ordinance thirty fifty and ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, amending section thirty point one three of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled Official Zoning Map of the City of Livingston by zoning the property addressed at One View Vista Drive and legally described as one in section thirteen township two south. Uh, T zero two S, range nine east, R zero nine E. Uh, certificate of survey nine eighty four, recently annexed and generally known as the View Vista Community as mixed use. Mr. Gagers.
Thank you, Chair Cale. Um, similar to the last item, the item before you is the zoning of a recently annexed property and similar to the last property, this property was annexed by petition of the owners and so we do have the the duty now to uh zone the property and um again, as with the the last uh property, I will invite Director Severson up to uh discuss the parcel and um and we jointly will stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Jennifer, again. Uh, yeah, so equally brief and as we said, we will happily answer questions. Um, this is a map of the New Vista Community. Um, it is before the annexation was approved. I considered pretty much an enclave completely surrounded by City of Livingston. If you go to the next one, again, this is required for recent annexation. The current use is uh mobile home communities. Um, and there also are three buildings with approximately, I think it's thirty three apartment units. So there are multifamily apartments and there are individual mobile homes. Uh, the future land use map and the growth policy um was kind of an interesting one because it's not in the area identified as the ETJ, but this is was on the ETJ, the extraterritorial jurisdiction map. So um the growth policy actually recommends this as medium density residential. Uh, medium density residential, just as a reminder, is intended primarily for single and two family dwellings. Multifamily dwellings are also accommodated on lots of adequate size. We are, and I'll actually come back up to the top in a second, but uh staff is actually recommending a mixed use zoning for this property. Um, mixed use intended to accommodate a mix of residential, neighborhood scale, commercial services and offices and small scale manufacturing, and that is artisan manufacturing. Um, mixed use is considered a residential zoning district. Um, and so that is important for um, the uses, the current uses on the property, whether they're allowed in either zoning district. Multifamily residential is not allowed at the current density. So that apartment, the apartment buildings right now at the density they're at are not allowed in R two. Um, again, it is a preexisting use. Um, so it would be illegal nonconforming use if they, if they kept that density. Manufactured homes are allowed in both these districts. Um, they are actually, and it's in a different part of our code. It's not in chapter thirty, but manufactured homes are allowed anywhere that um uh uh in all residential zoning districts, I think is the language. Um, and again, mixed use is considered residential in our code. That's how it's categorized. Um, so manufactured homes are allowed in both districts. The reason this is important is our understanding is that uh to meet building code were um a a mobile home to be replaced. The manufactured home just means it's HUD certified. I think it's after nineteen eighty four, nineteen eighty six, so it meets more of the current building code. Um, I do not know how many homes out there currently are manufactured versus mobile home according to the way that they're categorized. Both of them are allowed to stay on the property, but any new homes brought in would need to meet that building code of of manufactured. Uh, mobile home communities um are currently allowed district wise in a special district called the RMO, residential mobile home, its communities. Um, so the existing use would be allowed to remain as a legal nonconforming use in R two. Um, also in mixed use. Again, there's individual mobile homes are allowed to um be in uh R two MH, RMO, I think there's a couple others, but for the communities right now, the way our our code is is there's that RMO district. I will say that when we embark on the zoning code overhaul in the near future, um, I do expect that to be something that is looked at. Um, that 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 designated mobile home community where you can have one. Um, so I I think that is is going to be something that is looked at, meaning I'm not sure if that designation in the future would be a zoning designation, um or it may change. Um, so the next slide. Again, all the criteria for zoning regulations in your staff report, I went through um my evaluation um and and how staff, I believe that it meets the criteria for rezoning for Montana code annotated. And there are are the various reasons and they're unhappy to answer if you have specific questions or or whatever, rather than going through all of them. But um yeah, our recommendation is is different than the future land use map. Um, I will say similar, I think, to the discussion that we just had for ry. It is my understanding that conditions in the city um as far as as housing affordability, availability are are even more of a concern than they were perhaps when the future land use map was created. Um, and so there is some discussion on on different types, variety of housing affordability that um kind of supports this, um, the mixed use district, which would allow for that variety versus the R two zoning. Um, so again, happy to answer any questions.
Uh, commissioners, any questions for uh Mr. Gager or Ms. Severson?
Yes, a quick one. I was still um up against a ninety day window on this as well.
Other questions? Vice Chair?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, when we I do remember talking about the future land use map south of Park Street in this whole size town. Have we like examined the potential impact on existing infrastructure if this was a maximum build out?
That's a a very good question, uh Vice Chair. Um, at one of the motivations for this annexation um was uh to help the community be able to fund water and sewer improvements uh within the community. And so uh it city staff is working with the community um to completely redo their water and sewer. And so we are, as we go through that process, uh working with the community to ensure that they fully contemplate and our engineers uh join them fully contemplate with the future of this property may look like to ensure that um there's adequate size um of mains, but also adequate space enhancements that may allow possible um, you know, future changes in in the facility. So yes, we are taking that into account and uh and water and sewer service was one of the many motivations for this annexation.
In the um existing infrastructure, because we just did a lot of downtown improvements. Um, that could handle like that's adequate for whatever potentially.
Yeah.
Could be engineered.
In in uh Geyser, we have substantially sized mains that this would tie into that we don't foresee any capacity issues.
Okay, thanks. I just am realizing the state of affairs was quite different when um I feel and please Commissioner Lyons, you would remember too, but and while Commissioner Schwartz, you would too, actually, like when we were going through the growth policy, I think the concern with I think this was becoming resident owned at that time and where we're, our highest concern was like we didn't want to displace people from our community and so thank you, neighbor works. Um, but working for some of these communities to make sure that they would have stable housing was like the highest concern and we weren't having this conversation at that time. As it was years ahead. So thank you. That's helpful to know that we would have adequate capacity. Depending on what we decide. That's my only. Um, well, I guess the other question I have, I'm sorry I stepped out. My eyes do a thing sometimes beyond my control. And so I'm sorry if you said this and I missed it. And it's not because what you say isn't important, it is important to me. I just need to not have burning in my head and also I wanted to see. Did you have a anything with the river here? This is much further away from the schools, but I know like the schools have been a This is much further away from the schools, but I know like the schools have been a whole conversation in the nineties.
So actually, and I I do touch on this uh briefly in um this was brought up at the um the zoning commission meeting. Um, and uh the map, a flood map should be in your packets. Um, the entirety of View Vista is currently that orange that you see right there, and there's the yellow outline. That is actually a five-hundred-year, which is a non-regulatory floodplain for the Yellowstone. Fleishman Creek is not currently a mapped floodplain, there is no mapped floodplain for Fleishman Creek. That is being included in the ongoing um flood study that is going on right now. Um, so again, any right now, being in a five-hundred-year floodplain just means um it 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 doesn't impact how you are required to build. Um, it, there's no floodproofing requirements, there are um no elevation requirements. Um, I I have talked to several people that said there was um, they aren't aware of any water that got into this community from Fleishman Creek um during the flood. I think that's because it's controlled, maybe there's like a gate or something, I don't know the whole, sorry, I don't, I know uh, because City Manager Gager knows a lot more about that than I do. Um, but uh the zoning commission did bring up, and I again, I touched on this in your staff report, basically right before the proposed findings of pact, it's below that that comparison of uses um listing. Um, it says um they noted possible issues related to the proximity of this property to Fleishman Creek and the implications of the floodplain study um on future floodplain maps and future flooding. So um again, that will be looked at when that study uh comes out and is adopted. Um, it's not just this community that may be impacted, it is any development along Fleishman Creek. Um, so uh, yeah, but but floodproofing, female female apartments and floodplain developments. If it becomes a regulatory floodplain, then it it would uh trigger the need for floodplain development comment and and floodproofing. Sorry, that was very long-winded.
No, that's, no, that's great, that's exactly what I was like, that's, that's exactly what I needed, my question wasn't perfect. So um, thanks for helping understand the distinction between the two maps.
Sure, and I just do want to mention in case there's anybody from that community that, and I'm sure this has already been touched on with Neighbor Works, the existing um buildings that are there. Um, that they, if 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 the floodplain designation were to change, they are not required to elevate or to do any of that unless they substantially improve. Were for some reason that whole thing come into concern with flooding, there are several federal grant programs that look at specifically mobile home communities to help to elevate them. But um just, I don't want anybody hearing this and being upset, thinking that they're gonna have to change their current house because they're grandfathered.
Thank you, that's really helpful.
Sorry, uh, I'll come up with another term.
That's really helpful, thank you for um. That's it for clarifying questions.
Anyone else clarifying questions? Commissioner Lyons?
Do you have, you know, this is a huge uh parcel in the context of downtown Livingston. Do you have a sense of the number of developable units? It would be, it's like the difference between R two and mixed use?
You have, you have hands, I think it's thirty-five.
So I I was gonna say, so the parcel is eleven acres approximately. The underlying uh density allowable on R two is approximately thirteen units per acre, not including ADUs, thirteen primary units. The uh base zoning in mixed use, my recollection is approximately forty-two primary units per acre, which uh is is the difference of approximately twenty-nine units per acre additionally that can be built in mixed use um versus R two. And uh, of course, there are ABU considerations that would expand that as well. Hopefully that answers the question.
That would expand the difference, or it would diminish the difference?
So the expand, and so there's in mixed-use zoning, again, approximately forty-two units per acre versus only thirteen units per acre in R two. So twenty-nine units per acre approximately more are allowed in mixed use. And just expanding that over the eleven uh acres of the of the property brings us to approximately three hundred nineteen units additional.
Uh, that seems about right, because we're at one forty-three. Is what I got for R two, four sixty-two is what I got for mixed two.
That's without ADUs, though.
That's without ADUs, that's just.
And the ADUs would, could be added to both scenarios or just the the R two scenario? So uh, as as discussed by you folks earlier in in January um and and asked, actually also is discussed by the zoning commission, we had intended um ordinance three zero four six to really clarify that uh ABUs um are for single-family um dwellings only and not for multifamily. And so you know, the the math changes a little bit depending on the the building typology, I guess.
Correct, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have, I have one, um Mister Gager and John. I know, so it, we're looking, one of the reasons that we're looking at the mixed use is because of the apartment buildings around the property already. Um, and they wouldn't be allowed in R two. Many of those apartments are not really inhabitable at this point, is kind of, I think, my understanding. And it would take some significant, either fixing up or potentially having to tear down and start again, and in that in that way, if we were at R two, those probably, those those apartments wouldn't come back.
Uh, yes, the the city through a community development block grant has been working with Neighbor Works to assess the condition of of the apartment buildings, and we do have a preliminary architectural report on those buildings that um does identify fairly significant uh improvements that would be required to make all the units habitable. And so um, yes, to the extent as as Director Severson has has pointed out, if large-scale uh repairs were done uh to the project, um depending on the timing of the floodplain regulations, they may not be able to um be uh be replaced. And and also, yes, if the density exceeded the underlying zone in there, that would make the placement.
Thank you. I yield with my questions, thank you. So we want to entertain a motion.
Okay, well. Get to the page. Make a motion to approve ordinance. I move to approve ordinance three zero five zero to amend City of Livingston zoning code section three zero point one three related to the official zoning map and to authorize the chair to sign ordinance three zero five zero.
A second. A motion by Schwartz and a second by Newt. Um, let's go ahead and open it up to public comment, so anyone in the room that would like to make public comment? Please come on up. Name an address for the record, please.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Himmstra, I work with Neighbor Works Montana. I live at one twenty-one South End here in Livingston. Um, I represent the board members and the residents of View Vista Community. Um, as Jennifer mentioned, the community is comprised of, it's a house that's on the property. There are multiple apartment buildings, um and then there are the manufactured homes. This community has been resident-owned since twenty twenty. Um, and right now they're seeing considerable growth and progress in in their community, which is tremendously exciting for them, for us. They're very appreciative of the annexation into the city that offers them services that they didn't have before. Um, and I will say that the board is in favor of the mixed-use zoning, that they feel that that offers the greatest potential for future growth for this community. The only question that we have that we would love clarification and assurance moving forward is as it pertains to manufactured homes um and how it's defined in the City of Livingston zoning code. Um, when I look at the use table, I don't see manufactured homes defined on there. Um, we have mobile homes, which are pre-nineteen seventy-six, and we have modular homes. Manufactured homes are post-nineteen seventy-six and HUD certified. Um, I was told that according to section thirty point five six point two, manufactured homes are permitted in all residential zoning districts. I'm assuming that means mixed use. Um, the question I have is for point B. It says all manufactured homes must be placed on a permanent foundation. Um, that is not the case in this community. We have fifty manufactured homes. Um, the concern the community has is moving forward, if we were to need to move one of the homes, if they wanted to add additional homes, would they be able to do so? We understand the homes as they are a grandfathered in, we just want to make sure we're not limiting the future of this community. They're doing an amazing job of getting on their feet, and we're doing great work with the infrastructure, we're so appreciative of that. But we want to make sure that highest and best use is there for them as well moving forward. So that is all I would ask of the commission, thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. And well, Rebecca will get through um public comment, and then we can address some of those questions or deliberation. Any other public comments um in the room or online? You're online, feel free to come off mute and uh give us your name and address, please. I'll ask one more time, folks online or in the room. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Commissioners, if you don't mind, I'll address some of these questions first. Mister Gager, did you get those questions? I tried to write them down to you, would you mind?
Uh, yes, and and we do appreciate the questions and and the partnership with Neighbor Works. Um, you know, I I think what Ms. Himmstra has um really identified is something that that we've discussed in the past here is that there are certain inconsistencies in the zoning provisions of the Livingston Municipal Code. And so we do have items that are defined and not included in in the list of uses. And we also have uses that are included in the list of uses that are not defined. And so um this uh this inconsistency that's been pointed out is something that that we are aware of within the city and intend to fix in the uh in the the zoning update that uh will commence here very shortly. And um please know it is, you know, obviously the the city has been working very closely with Neighbor Works um to ensure that this process is smooth and beneficial for everyone involved. And uh it is, it's not our desire or intention to in any way impede upon what is happening down there now. Uh, it is really just simply a case of a a zoning code that could use a little bit of updating. And um and and we, you know, at an administrative level, I do agree that that manufactured homes are allowed uh anywhere that a a uh a normal homes or any other dwelling type is allowed. And um the the specific calling out of certain home types um is is not something that is a current best practice uh in in zoning codes nowadays. So hopefully that serves to answer the community's questions. Um, if I missed one, I'm happy to address that as well.
I think one that kind of stuck out to me would be if they, with the foundation issue, and if they needed to move an existing home to make room for others or make some rearrangements, is that possible for them?
Um, we will work within our administrative authority to uh accommodate any changes. There may be a chance that a a variance uh request, if if there is a change that needs to happen, you know, in the next, you know, several months or so before we have the opportunity to update the zoning code. Um, we may work through a variance request there, um but I I don't see it being a an obstacle that was overly difficult to overcome.
Thank you. All right. Commissioners, deliberation?
Before we deliberate, can we get um the process for a variance request? Just sure, because it's not something everybody might know.
Fair question, um you may recall, we handled one of these very recently related to a uh of 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 mobile home um that had a a setback deviation that they were requesting. And so there is an application that's submitted to um the the zoning administrator, and then that application is presented to the city commission as we recently have.
Deliberation, Commissioners?
No.
Sure, I'll go first.
Okay, Vice General Newt.
Um, well, first, Ms. Himmstra, thank you so much for sharing. One, that I'm not losing my mind, that it was around the same time as the growth policy, appreciate the validation. Um, and also, it's really great to hear the community's doing so well, because we don't always get updates at the commission level. And this part of our community has been important to the commission for a long time, even before annexation, so thank you. It's very meaningful. Um, and also, this is another example, we didn't have this zone when we did the growth policy. Mixed use was not yet a thing in the City of Livingston. And I do remember we were talking about everything south of Park Street going to R three, except for certain areas where we were concerned about um impacts with certain large wildlife that moved through town, like moose and bear. Um, so I'm surprised, although I guess I shouldn't be surprised that we put R two for this. Maybe it's because we were trying to match what was currently there within the existing code that we had. But I do remember that we talked about everything south of Park, wanting to allow increased density with um with infrastructure upgrades that we were sometime, they were happening sometime around there, weren't they? All the stuff downtown has been happening forever, feels like. So I think it makes sense to lean towards mixed use um instead of R two. And also with everything that has been said previous tonight, previously tonight, like Commissioner Willett's points about needing the ability to diversify the economy, mixed use allows for that. I appreciate also that the infrastructure can handle it. Also appreciate the close partnership between the resident-owned community with the city for before annexation and after. Really a great example of what's possible in Montana. And also recognizing that the conversation about housing here is really different than the previous agenda item because the built environment is so different and um the way the river has, the way the community, previous to any of us being on the commission, responded to the river and some of the things that were done around the river prior to us. It's like a different risk. Um, none of it's great to flood or think about flooding anything, but it's just a very different conversation than the last agenda item in my mind. Um, that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Other Commissioners? Mr. Willetts?
A deliberation, a question perhaps?
Mixed use. And what I see here, I'm looking at our new uh neighborhood commercial, and I see in in at least in the uh the narrative, I see neighborhood commercial fairly often in here. What is the difference between mixed use and neighborhood commercial in this application other than a sixty-foot height as opposed to a twenty-seven-foot height?
Mister Gager or?
So um prior to this evening, there were fairly substantial differences in in the amount of residential that was allowed. Um, and and in fact, um one of those those differences remains in that neighborhood commercial. Residential uses are only allowed in a building that also includes a commercial use, um whereas that is not a requirement of of the mixed use. So, and so um there are some some different uses, but that really, I think, is the that is probably also the pattern.
Understood, thank you.
Mister Lyons?
Um. I appreciate and agree with um the comments that we've gotten, our deliberation we've had so far. I think that my only hesitation with. What really is a pretty permissive land use designation. Um. Comes down to kind of the potential. For. Environmental injustice happening here of like allowing for, you know. This is a a current um location of affordable housing in our community. And it is an environmentally sensitive and blood prone area. And so. There's just potential in a, I mean, there's potential as it is for there to be environmental injustice. And in just the the location of um affordable housing in a in a prone area. And then there's potential to facilitate. More of that by allowing for higher intensity residential development there. What? Especially if that is affordable um residential development. Um. That said, uh. I will just go on record saying I'm a fan of mixed use development. I think that it's a uh a great. Way to do land use planning. Uh, I also appreciate the fact that. Um, being a resident owned community, there's like some uh. Self determination here in in terms of how uh those injustices and risks. Can be um mitigated or exacerbated. So I um, you know, kind of like trust the. The folks working on that to to make wise decisions for themselves. But I just want us to consider the fact that. You know, in in a in green lighting, a more permissive land use designation. We facilitate the potential for. Uh, greater risk uh to vulnerable populations in our community. I think that um. Mobile home parks, manufactured housing and all kinds of um, you know, non-traditional. Housing types are an incredible asset to our community when it comes to affordable housing. And I I have no interest in. I have no interest in excluding those those uses in in Livingston. And uh I just. Have some caution about uh facilitating higher intensity residential development. Particularly that um, that kind of development that's intended for affordable housing. In a blood prone, but blood prone. By risk area.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that doesn't, I don't think, and you know, deliberating, so I can share that. I don't think that that brings me to a point of not.
Mm-hmm.
Wanting to um designated mixed use. But I do want to go on record that I'm um just concerned about putting. Vulnerable residents in our way. Oh, all you open up. Oh.
You know, you know.
I know, yeah, no.
Mister Schwartz, anything?
Um, just to just reiterate it. That it's in the five hundred year flood plain. Um, subject to change, obviously, and I probably will change a hundred. Your flood plain, but um. That's why I just didn't get tank for this. All right.
Okay, well, I'll go. Um, thank you, Commissioner Lyons. Um, I appreciate those comments. Also sort of looking back at what uh Chair Newt or Vice Chair Newt said about. This built environment is a little different than the last that we talked about. And we didn't see this area take on the water. Um, this goes around, doesn't mean that it won't happen. Uh, doesn't mean that we're not going to have a bigger flood. Um, but I do agree that when those maps come out, we're probably going to see some differences. And and hopefully that will also put some other guardrails in place um for future development. Um, but also looking at this and and thinking about affordable housing. And a resident owned community and those residents taking control of that property. And having the ability to grow it in a way that they want to grow and develop. And and see um. Do the the things that come with it for them, you know, the the improvements to the property, the improvements to the property values. And what that could mean for them um, I think is huge. And I really, granted, I mean, they they can make any choice they want and they could take a section of it and sell it off. Or, you know, whatever they want to do. And of course, then when we're looking at zoning, we have to look at that. You know, as this is forever at this point unless some something gets changed. Um. But geez, I I really don't want to. Slow them down or stop them from having the ability to improve their property. Um, and really just improve some of the things that are already there um with the apartment buildings and and that kind of thing. So. I like the idea of mixed use. For me, it seems like that fits. What a great place to be able to live right off of downtown and lots of walkable places to go. And I can, I can see really wonderful, great things for that community as they make their decisions. And and do and develop that. So, and thank you for working with the city. And I'm so excited that we can get the water and sewer situated for them. I mean, for them and for the rest of us, um, it'll be a lot a lot better for our community. So. With that, all yields. Anything else, Belloc?
I got something.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
It's. Probably pushing it to the to the extreme and absurd, but I think I have, I think what I have an issue about is the zone itself. And that I'm looking at on page one oh one paragraph there. Mixed use zoning also has a greater heart height allowance than R two, sixty feet versus twenty seven feet. And smaller minimum lot size than R two, thirty five hundred square feet versus eight hundred and seventy five square feet. So. My brain says sixty foot tall, eight hundred and seventy five square foot. Buildings on eleven acres is that that I don't think that necessarily fits in level of our city. Like, that is the maximum possible use that you could use on that. And I don't want to limit the neighborhood and I don't want to limit. I don't want to limit anybody's ability. But I there's something that doesn't jive there, where you have a much, much smaller lot. And you can go up more than twice as tall. Something has to give. There's got to be some sort of a a compromise in there somewhere with maybe it's just that's the zone. Maybe the minimum lot size needs to be increased. For a sixty foot tall building. I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure where to go with that. That's just something that I'm saying that. I have an issue with. It's not something that's going to make or break the boat tonight. But it is something that I see coming up that maybe in part of the zoning. Uh, I guess review that we do in the in the coming weeks that 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 comes up.
Can I?
Yeah, please.
Um, a couple thoughts first um in response to Commissioner Commissioner Willage. I think um one comparison that's not in here that could be interesting is comparing R three. Um, because R two to mixed use is a lot different. I wonder, this is not a public test, Mister Gager. And also, at the same time, comparing R two to R three to mixed use to what's adjacent to this property. Is the central business district. Um, I think that could be meaningful.
Yeah.
Um, because central business district is what really butts this property. Um, if memory serves me correctly, so far, I'm one for one on memory at least tonight. Um. But like R two, because we were talked about R three um on everything on this side of the tracks. Except for those exceptions that I named earlier.
Right.
And central business district is the other thing that's really on this side of the track. We don't have a lot of mixed use over here yet, do we? I mean, we have it mostly on Bennett and then there's some other. This is it. I failed my memory. I forgot it. There's another place. There's an excuse.
Well, they are predominantly on the north sides of of the tracks in the City of Livingston.
Okay, okay.
So um.
Okay, thank you.
Washington School.
So I can, I still have one more comment, but before that, could you like compare the four with us just to miss Commissioner Willage's point like?
Yes, a- a- absolutely. So um I I think, you know, perhaps most appropriately start, we start on the minimum lot size. And um both, uh, excuse me, so R two, which is the recommended zoning by the the extraterritorial jurisdictions. A minimum lot size of thirty five hundred, R three is one thousand one hundred and fifty. And mixed use is eight hundred and seventy five square feet.
Mm-hmm.
When we look at height, um bull, uh, excuse me, R two is twenty seven. You can have a a taller if you have a certain roof pitch. Um, R three is fifty feet tall and uh mixed use, as the commissioner uh pointed out, is sixty feet tall. When we go to central business district, which is not a residential district. Um, there is no minimum lot size, there is no maximum building height. And um, and and so uh there there really is much greater density allowed in the central business district. And quite honestly, this is, you know, as as Director Severson and I were um kicking ideas around early on in this process. Um, it became very clear to us that this was adjacent to the central business district, which is the most intense uh use zone um in the city. And so uh recognizing the goals of infill that are uh enumerated in the growth policy. Um, i- in addition to the existing density issues. Um, this felt like if there was an area that was perhaps suited for for more dense infill. Um, this might be it because of its proximity to the central business district. And uh and and also um the the ability for water and sewer infrastructure to actually support a level of density.
Sure.
Um, so hopefully that that helps answer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, that helps, I think, because when we were first talking about mixed use, it was. Putting something in between our current zoning and bringing opportunities for commercial, like we've talked about extensively tonight. Um, to other parts of town. Um, and then knowing that I believe the rest of the future land use map most fit is R three, designated for R three. Um, except for the central business district.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I think it's helpful to see them side by side instead of just jumping and skipping that sort of intermediate zone. Um, and realizing realistically what could happen in the central business district. With it being the most permissive zone.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the other thing I wanted to respond to is Commissioner Lyons, I appreciate you thinking about um. Justice and what that means.
Mm-hmm.
Um, no secret that I lived in an environmental justice community. I don't speak for all vulnerable people, because that's not a thing. Um, wildly diverse, right, what the needs of vulnerable people are. I appreciate knowing. Um. I appreciate knowing what the community wants. That's really important to me. And I think that's um one thing where historically governments. Historically have um sometimes failed communities by not being responsive to what the community needs. So I feel like it's an opportunity potentially for a vulnerable part of our community. Um, I feel like this is what I heard you saying too, like being responsive to what they're also asking for in the context of. The complex ecosystem in which we live. So. So thanks for bringing it up.
Any other comments? Mister Lyons?
As promised, Commissioner Short. Um. This is, I have a a question for uh the city manager staff. To Commissioner Wilch's point. Is there? A scenario? Um. Within the context of the zoning code and setbacks, I noticed in that table that there are no setbacks required in in mixed use. Uh, so I'm guessing that the restriction might come in the form of building code. To limit an eight hundred and seventy five square foot lot from building sixty feet tall. Um. Is it, is it, would it be possible uh for there to be a sixty foot tall building on a eight hundred and seventy five square foot lot? And next use?
Um, I I am admittedly no engineer, but uh there are, there are building technologies that that may allow that possibility. But I would offer, um, when we were reviewing the different zoning districts just now, um, I didn't touch upon parking. And and quite honestly, in a great many situations, parking is the main factor in any development. And so the City of Livingston does require one parking spot for every unit of of multifamily housing. And so um to the extent that uh one housing unit was constructed at eight hundred and seventy five square foot lot. Sixty feet tall, that they could potentially create that situation. But um realistically, the the parking will be a constraining factor on on the overall density in the end zone. And and I would offer Director Severson to.
I just, I maybe I'm misunderstanding, but the minimum lot size for the eight seventy five is for a single dwelling. So you can't have eight hundred and seventy five square feet with twenty dwellings up to six dwellings. Does that? Did I miss it? Okay.
So I can't do, I mean, I guess you could have a sixty.
You could have a sixty foot tall, eight hundred and seventy five square foot, single family.
Uh, sure.
If somebody wants to go there.
Yeah, and then I. While I have the floor, I'll just, uh, you know, I I say this a lot, that the market is what. Um, and uh, you know, maybe you could imagine that in San Francisco or in New York City or something like that. But sure, probably not uh on Western Creek in Livingston. So. That's all.
And across the street, yeah, I'm sure it's.
Yeah.
Sixty feet. Awesome.
All right, I am going to move us along unless there's any last.
I just am going to say Rapunzel. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay.
Got to get it out.
Okay.
All I can think of is a tower. Oh. Rapunzel now.
Money and time.
That's what engineers tell us.
Okay, I'm going to move us on to, well, can a roll call please? Do I need to read? Are you good?
Yeah, no, we're.
Okay, all right. There Kail says four.
Vice Chair Newt.
Four.
Mister Schwartz, four.
Commissioner Lyons, or Commissioner Willet.
Motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving on.
Can we extend meetings anymore? Something that you just stopped doing.
At eight thirty, do we need, I thought it was more like ten.
Eight thirty is supposed to.
Okay, uh, can I have a motion to extend?
I brought it up.
I'll make a motion to extend.
So I have a motion to extend by Newt, just a second.
Second.
Second, by Lyons, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We are extending the meeting. One just second. Want you to do that? Yeah, we've been going at it for an hour, folks. Do we want to take another, just a quick five minute break before we do this last one?
Well, depends how. Into the weed.
Let's just do it.
And let's just do it because we will get into it.
Okay.
I need a sip of water.
I have a motion by Newt, and I do have a second, but you're.
Thank you.
I'm gonna call us back to order at eight thirty-nine. And move on to our next agenda item. Action item E ordinance thirty fifty-one, okay, and ordinance of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana, amending chapter ten. Curfew disturbing the peace and noise of the Livingston municipal code by amending section ten dash five and ten dash six. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kale. The item before you is. Something that the city commission discussed a little bit over the summer and requested staff to bring back. And so that's why we are here this evening, is to have a conversation related to the noise ordinance in the city. And. I will in a brief moment introduce Greg Anthony, that will run through some of the work and some of the considerations that were done. But I I really wanted to, I I guess. Kind of clarify why we are moving in this direction. One, it was a a request of the city commission. Two, as we have. In the current budget year, increased our code enforcement assets. We have encountered. You know, some vagaries in the code that have made enforcement of the noise ordinance difficult. And so as you can see here this evening, we have tried to add some quantified specified. Noise limits for for members of the of the community. Really to provide clarity both for users and also for our enforcement staff. And so if it pleases the commission, I will introduce Greg. Who will fill over his his presentation related to the noise ordinance here. And at the conclusion of that, we will stand for any questions that you may have as a commissioner.
Good evening, commissioners, longtime listener, first time caller. So real quick. So the reasons for ordinance thirty fifty-one amending ten dash five and ten dash six. Couple of bullet points I'd like to bring up if you want to go to the next one. Two main reasons here enhances community well-being. This ordinance will significantly enhance the quality of life for residents by reducing noise pollution. Leading to a more peaceful and comfortable living environment. It also provides regulatory clarity, as Mr. Gager alluded to. Implementing this ordinance provides clear guidelines and standards for noise levels, ensuring consistency and enforcement. This clarity is beneficial for both residents and businesses as it sets defined expectations. And reduces conflicts related to noise disturbances. To the next one. This also aligns with the twenty twenty-one growth policy. The growth policy advocates for increased density within the city, necessitating a more robust noise regulation. As Livingston evolves with higher density, living spaces, community events, and commercial activities, noise control becomes crucial. This ordinance ensures city development does not compromise residents' peace and tranquility. So the proposed noise levels, and I'll explain these a little bit. We classify them into two sections, daytime and nighttime. Daytime spanning from seven AM to eight PM at night. And then evening, eight PM to seven AM in the morning. For these decimal levels, you know, and I'll go through those just real quick, just for clarity. Daytime sixty-five decibels in residential, evening it would go down to fifty-five decibels. Daytime commercial would be eighty decibels, evening sixty decibels, and industrial ninety decibels and evening eighty decibels. It's important to note that when, you know, you're discussing decibels, any prolonged exposure to eighty-five decibels or higher. Can lead to hearing loss. So that's kind of the justification for why these numbers are where they're at. But just want to expand a little bit on that, so if you wanna. There are exceptions to this ordinance. It's written in. So some of the exceptions, safety signals and warning, device noise, emergency vehicles. Noises during calls or emergencies. This would also include emergency work noise, you know. There has to be an emergency repair on a, you know, infrastructure, for instance. Motorized lawnmower noise is exempted from this policy between seven AM and eight PM. Home building repair and maintenance. So this would, you know, allude to construction projects that are going around the city. School and public park activities noise. You know, when I put that in there, I kind of envisioned, you know, if you have a football game at the high school, these are likely to, you know. Span later in the evening. Authorized public park events noise, also general noise in parks from seven AM to eight PM. Also noise from city-approved special events, which are covered in the ordinance. This would also include city-performed construction and maintenance noise, public right-of-way construction maintenance noise with a waiver. And waivers granted to construction and maintenance noise. It also outlines a process for that. So and also I included a community comparisons chart in here. These are other cities in Montana and kind of where they set their decibels. As you can see, we're aligned pretty closely with Billings, Montana. An example for Bozeman actually regulates all of their noise at sixty decibels regardless of area. And then Missoula's is a little bit. Lighter than Billings, so. You want to take a moment to go through those? And so if adopted, that's kind of where Livingston sits. And I'll stand for any questions that you have.
You know, I'm all over this one. Because I read noise ordinances for fun. Thank you. I do read noise ordinances for fun. And this is, what's up?
That's what it sounds like, huh?
Yeah, this is a good time. This is like, I feel like what you're offering is pretty comprehensive. I mean. Compared to like the kinds of noise ordinances that I've read. I'm also. So thank you. I appreciate you, you pointed out something about. The process, I think it was like. The slides are nothing anymore. I think it was like two slides back. So, oh yeah, so the waiver, so you have like potentially the. The opportunity for administrative process. Built in, thank you, because sometimes as we've seen, like. That's something that's forgotten and then we have to go back years later because it's not something that. City staff can actually do anything about after we pass a policy. I am curious about. Like. And I wonder if this is an enforcement thing. You've thought about this more than I have, like Billings has. Something that I found curious and it was. In their code with noise. Like a minimum and a maximum permissible noise. Can you just like educate us? Is that? The rea- like the reason why you chose not to put that in?
Yeah, I can explain that. You know, I looked at multiple cities to kind of see, you know, how they specifically listed their decimal limits. And some cities do have a max and then a minimum. I think my intent when I put this together. Was to make it as, you know, standard as possible without. You know, creating variations. There were some early versions of this where I'd actually outline different sets of hours. And really, I just, over the course of it, tried to simplify it as much as possible, specifically so that, you know, the code could be enforced. And also, I think, especially with these decimal levels, you know, these are some of the least, you know, these match the least restrictive of the cities I showed. And there was intent there to, you know, this can serve as a building block, you know, if it's determined later that it's not enough. It is something that we would be able to go back and change.
Okay. Thank you. That's really helpful, because when I was reading over Billings, I was curious about what you just said, if that. It makes it difficult to interpret the law and enforce it. I think that's like the only clarifying questions that I have right now. Thank you for. You made it seem really simple. I don't think that this is simple. I think your presentation made it seem simple, and so the staff report, and I think. Noise ordinances are all over the place, so thank you for giving us something digestible from. From the beginning of the conversation.
Any other clarifying questions for? Mr. Gager or Greg? If we have no questions.
I haven't done one tonight, so I can do one as soon as I find this. It's my turn. I picked a long one to say yes to. Got it.
Do it.
Yeah. I move to approve the first reading of ordinance three zero five one, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana. Amending chapter ten, curfew disturbing the peace and noise. Of the Livingston municipal code by amending section ten dash five and ten dash six and authorize the chair to sign.
Take a second? So I heard Commissioner Shorts over Commissioner Lyons, but I think you said it at the exact same time. All right, so we have a motion on the table. We will go ahead and open it up for public comment. Let's start with folks in the room. Come on up to the podium, give your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Erica Adams, and I'm the executive director at the Sheen Center. I live at one oh five at South C Street. We really support the updated and modern noise ordinance and believe that the suggested modifications have made some great steps towards that. If this were to pass, we would need some guidance on how to comply and what our obligations. And duties under the proposed law would be. To echo the reasons for recommendation provided in the staff report, we're really interested in just obtaining a clear. Guidelines, for instance, seeking clarification on which events would fall under section eight. Who would administer the ordinance, which office or department? Would there be fees? When would an applicant need to apply for a waiver versus a noise suppression plan? Does a special exception permit granted by the city commission apply to the city-approved events? And then regarding the consistency of enforcement. Who would be responsible for enforcing the ordinance? What noise monitoring equipment or techniques would be document, used for documentation and monitoring the results? Would those meters meet the ANSI standards? And what training or qualifications would enforcement officials be provided with? To mention like a few specific examples of some of the big. Language that I would love to make sure I understand. In in section A on page one twenty and one twenty-one in the commission packet, it defines. The modality, the devices and qualifies the space, room, vehicle, or chamber, but the latter all interior spaces. So does section A three not apply to exterior outdoor noises? Further, it references in that same section plainly audible, which. Might be kind of subjective. Because it's what's plainly audible to a child might not be plainly audible to anyone who's older than fifty. Another point in this section specifies fifty feet from from the property line. Which, based on my really limited understanding, seems to contradict section nine, where levels measured, where it specifies levels. Measured at the property line. And then, like, the overarching is just in section A eight. It reads special community events, but it doesn't define what that term entails. So it says, any noise generated by permitted special events or other events to which the public is invited. With inclusion of other events, is the definition different than permitted special events or? It reads any event which is open to the public, so considered a special community event as it is included in the subsection. Even when a permit is not required. So just getting clarity around when a permit would be required. In section A eight E, it requires all reasonable measures and. So under the proposed, who would be responsible for determining reasonability? Those are just a few, to be respectful of time, those are just a few of the examples that I had. But as stated in the preamble, it's, the intent is to balance the diverse activities, set clear guidelines and restrictions. To ensure that Livingston remains a harmonious and vibrant community. I just want to make sure that I understand some of the vague. Ambiguities in that and and really encourage the commission to 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 delay adoption. And take a little bit more time to provide clear guidelines. Possibly involve community key stakeholders so that we can have a understanding of how this ordinance. Will be administered and enforced so that together we can enhance the quality of life for all of the residents in our community. I really appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Any other public comments in the room? Online? Anyone online like to make public comments? Please feel free to come off mute, give your name. I'll ask one more time, any public comments? Seeing none. We will close public comment. Mr. Gager, there are. If you don't mind, I'm gonna go to Mr. Gager first. There are some questions there. I wrote down a few. I don't know.
I I was writing as quickly.
Do you want to make a stab at some of them?
Yes, you know, I will, I guess I will start with some of the seemingly easier questions first. It it is my expectation that this ordinance, if approved by the commission, will be enforced by our. Code Enforcement Division. And so we have currently three employees who are involved in that work. And however, they will be occasionally supplemented aided by the Livingston Police Department in enforcement of of this ordinance. And typically, and and as is noted here, the, and and I guess I'll be somewhat specific. The, in in. Section A nine, when we talk about noise levels. The the decimals that have been presented will be as measured at the property line. And so I, this speaks to the question of how this will be enforced. Code enforcement staff typically will take the the readings at the property line if if a complaint is received. And and yes, our machines that that we monitor these with will be ANSI certified. And we do, we have identified those machines. We do have. Some available to us and have used them in in practice and preparation for this ordinance, so. And and I actually have. Relatively solid experience, about five years of supervising code enforcement where we enforce. Noise ordinance is very similar to this, so I I do have confidence that the city can. Can accurately manage these with regards to the the special community events. And and that portion, as you folks know, we do have permitted special events within the city that typically occur. In in public spaces and in the public right-of-way. And and so those events certainly are what is referenced there. However, the other events to which the public is invited is a bit more of a catch-all. That is really intended to help us regulate some activity on private property that may be outside of the the special. The the specially permitted events. That said, there are certain facilities that benefit from a special. Exception permit that has been granted by the city commission. And some of those special exception permits, excuse me, special exception permits do require. Special event permits for some events on private property, just. By virtue of the special exception permit that has been granted by the city commission. So those events really would fall in here to the extent that. So those events uh really would fall um i- in here to the extent that anything under the required permit from the special exception that was granted by you folks. Or um if not, and and they're just general open events that don't meet the threshold that was established by the commission, those events would also be regulated by this. And then I I also heard questions regarding regarding to subsection eight three uh regarding radios, phonographs, loudspeakers, and sound amplifiers. And while we do certainly reference uh rooms, vehicles, or chambers, um I would offer that there's perhaps uh situations in which um you know, rooms or chambers certainly do not have to be interior to a building. And um and and so um, you know, there there may certainly be some some clarification that that could be appropriate there. However, um when when I look at this, I think that uh section eight especially um gives us and section nine really does give us the ability to uh enforce upon radio, spawn graphs, loudspeakers, and sound amplifiers uh that may be used outside of a room, vehicle, or chamber. And so uh hopefully I've addressed all of the questions. I may have uh missed one or two. Um, and we'd be happy to uh address those if the if the commission desires.
There was, I had, I'd written down fees. Question about fees.
Oh, yeah, and sorry, uh, the the fees for the the special, um specially permitted events, they do have a an application fee. Uh, I believe it is fifty dollars at this point, and there are other fees associated with events. Um, just trash, uh, police, law enforcement, traffic control, those types of of things typically generate a fee that is um dependent upon the the staff requirements of of events. Um, and that all, you know, plays off of the the details of of each of them.
Me. I have a I guess the other questions that was um what does plainly audible mean? Which department is code enforcement fall within? Those are the only other things I got.
So code enforcement is a a separate division that uh reports directly to me. And as I said, we have three folks in it and um plainly audible. It, you know, I I I do suppose that there is probably some ambiguity there in the term plainly audible, but I would just take that as a a a common plain language reading of of the English there to say that is a a noise that is uh capable of being heard by somebody who is not otherwise impaired. And that.
Thank you. And so I will just just to kind of clear, uh, to clarify these questions a little bit and then I'll come to you. Um. And so I don't mean to pick on the Shane Center, but just to use you sort of as an example, maybe for some clarification. Shane Center has has this special exemption.
Exception permit.
Yeah. Yes. So they, within that exemption, were given some clarification of like when you need to apply for a permit with those. So that's when this takes effect. So am I kind of?
That that is what section A eight takes effect.
Okay. So in those times when you were told that you needed to get the permit from the city, this is that would, okay. Hopefully that helps a little bit. Um. Commissioners.
That's exactly what I was going to say too.
Okay.
Using the Shane Center, it's an example, yeah. Okay.
Commissioner Lyons.
Um. I have a, just a a question. On page one twenty-three. Section A G. Require uh talks about a waiver request. Is that waiver request granted administratively or by the commission? Uh, you know, if there is a a summer in which there are a bunch of waiver requests, is that something that we will be dealing with on the commissioners? That's something that will be dealt with administratively.
So um excellent question. We had intended um these to be unadministrative.
Uh, that's my only question. Thank you.
I just have for clarifying now. On page one twenty-two, that's the redlined ordinance. The one we're looking at is thirty fifty-one is the one that's been corrected, right? Or does like?
So i- in this case, so we have presented both a red line um that begins on page one one eight. And then we have also presented a clean version that begins, exactly, on page one thirty-one. And so in this situation, um the the changes were of a magnitude enough that we did not try to simply integrate them into the existing language. And so we, you know, just did basically a strike all amendment.
Right. Yeah. So what, what, everything that pertains tonight, uh, what we're looking at is one thirty-one and beyond.
Exactly.
Never. Yeah. So like the recording from page one twenty-two, that's that's the old.
No, that's that's the new addition to the old. So the old
Oh, okay.
What struck through on page one nineteen. And then starting on page one twenty on is all new.
Yeah.
Right.
So anything in black is
Right, okay.
What it would be.
So the only difference between what starts uh um page one thirty-one is just that there isn't the the old part structure at the beginning.
Right, yeah, this is the clean one with, yeah, that we should be that we're deliberate or will deliberate on, right?
What I read is also on
Right, okay, yeah, okay. Yeah, I just, I get confused between. Yeah. Because Adams from Shane Center was quoting from the first uh the strike through one. I just want to make sure I'm not missing something here. Okay.
It's all still
It's all still relevant, yeah.
What I read starts also on page one.
One thirty-five, okay. Okay, thank you. That's all.
And so we are, just to kind of remind us, because it's been a little bit of a long evening, we've had a motion. We've had public comment and we are
Well, we are.
We are in deliberation. So. Commissioner Willis.
Um, yeah, I was just kind of wondering about the change from ten P M to eight P M now for the enhanced quiet hour. And what is the impetus for that? Or is is that, I mean, I don't know, I just, everywhere I've ever been is tend to, actually ten to six, but we had ten to seven and now we're only eight to seven? I think if I understand it. Is that something other cities do? A- a- and so, uh, yes, that was in- included actually in the in the table um here. And so, no, no, not to worry. It's been a long evening, sir. Um, and so, yes, there was uh in in this um table here. Um, we, uh, well, it's, we didn't re- we did not recreate it there, but we observed that um that eight P M frequently was uh was when nighttime started. And then there was also um during the special exception permit process, there was conversation uh related to events up to eight P M and then also events up to ten P M. Right, so we tried to um at least have some some measure of consistency um between what's what's been granted in special exceptions and what is in the disorder.
Right. I may, um, y- when looking at what other cities have done, it varies per city. Some of them do divide the hours up differently. Um, but there's really not. It's kind of all over the place. Um. I kind of defaulted to this mainly for simplification.
Sure. Yeah, I'm thinking eight o'clock at in in January, it's darkest pitch, but eight o'clock in August, it is still like daytime, basically. And so you know, ten o'clock seems like maybe we have a summer hours and summer hours and winter hours or or something for our night, but that's just obviously difficult. All right, there's something like those. I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Commissioner Lyons, anything? I sure knew it.
Sure. You're up. Um. I think to Commissioner Welch's point, that's um maybe what some of the special exception permits would be for would be the exceptions where
Those two.
Yeah, just because like lots of people still have to work in the summer and, right, have grandparents and little kids or they just from what we heard, the last time noise came up. Um, you know, as Mr. Anthony was alluding to, like, noise is a health issue also. And so I think I think the special exception permits would cover some of the special exceptions for later nights.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, nine to ten.
And then um in regards to like the public comment around level of specif- specificity in code or in policy, I do think that it's important for the commission and the legislative branch of government to recognize their role and that we make the policy, we don't administer it. And so it's important for staff to be able to have some ability to interpret the law, like it can't be so prescriptive. An example would be, right, like, the police decide what reckless is. It's not necessarily like specifically defined every reckless behavior because that's like an impossible feat to like define things perfectly prescriptively in advance of passing a policy. And but we trust, right, for example, that our police have gone through training, et cetera, and that they have like learned in the academy. All the things that laypeople don't learn. So that's just like an example. Um, so I would caution us from um being overly specific, or we could just have a policy that's not useful.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and also unable to enforce it because it's too specific. I think that this is a nice balance. I appreciate that Mr. Anthony offered us something that's as permissive as I've seen. It seems achievable when I was um walking around neighborhoods with my decimal reader. Um. The real decimal level of instance is much quieter than this. I didn't go through like commercial zones or industrial. I was going through residential zones, which are much, much quieter than fifty-five from what I saw or from what I heard. Um. So it seems like this is a reasonable place to start. And if, in fact, it's too permissive, I think the public will tell us that it's too permissive and we need to edit. Or if it's too restrictive, I think the public
Will let us know.
Will let us know. Um, or if staff goes to implement the policy and it's not working, that they will also tell us that we need to adjust. So I think it seems like a good starting point from my perspective.
Ailed. Um, I I will just say that I I agree with, I agree with what you just said. And and also, I think that this is more pers- more prescriptive in a good way than the old ordinance, which was very uh subjective. Um, and so this gives us some real num- some real levels um to look at. And I think as Vice Attorney said, we'll hear from folks whether, you know, these these levels seem way off or or not. But my hope is that that this will also, this will be protective on sort of both sides of the coin, that folks in a neighborhood could complain about sound and get someone to come out and check it and deal with it. But also folks in the neighborhood could complain about sound and someone can come out and check it and say like, well, there this event that's happening, this house party, something going on at the Shane Center, this business is falling, is below these levels and they're exactly where they need to be and they're doing the right thing and you you can complain, but we're not going to do anything about it and that's going to protect both sides of the coin.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because I think previously this ordinance was awfully subjective and could certainly put people on either side in a bad situation. Um, so hopefully that will will help with that. I think this is a great place to start. I think that we need to do it. Um, and yeah, I mean, I, we'll we'll hear from folks if this isn't working. And I know that Mr. Gager will will work with the staff to make sure that this is handled appropriately and and help them and train them because these are things that you've done before um and have experience in and we are very thankful for that. Um. That's all I have. Any other deliberation?
I just, I want to say thank you, Mr. Anthony. I this is a way to come out of the gate, all right, that your, our manager has you start with this for your first policy presentation. Thank you. That's
Mm-hmm.
fun.
He's good job. That's into the job. I feel like it began.
I know, it's like the first one. It's like, it feels like it's a significant update to the code. So thank you. Nice job.
Right, and so for my folks, this is the first reading. We'll see this again. There'll be opportunities for further public comment as well. Um, but if we're ready, we'll we'll move on to that. We'll talk, please.
Chair Kail.
For
Vice Attorney.
For Commissioner Schwartz.
For Commissioner Lyons.
For
Mr. Welch.
For
Motion. All right, so that brings us to the bottom of our agenda. And city commissioner, city manager comment. Mr. Glazer, sorry.
Commissioners, I thank you for your time this evening. Uh, I know that we've got certainly two property owners, including one uh residential home community. They're very excited to uh be part of the city and and learn how they would be owned. So I thank you for your time there. And I'll keep my comments brief so I can go home and eat some leftover food with chopsticks.
All right. Mr. Willis, you're up. Mr. Collins.
Good meeting, if you like. Uh, good steps forward with the some of the things we talked about today. Um. Commissioner News is a nerd for carrying around a decimal meter with him. And
Guilty as charged.
Nerd, nerd.
Nerd. And uh, to quote Lord Kelvin once again, if you don't measure it, you can't improve on it. So good for steps, thanks.
Just compare me to a lord.
I think that's his name.
For Mr. Lyons.
Um. I think I've, I think I've spoken my last word already. I yield.
Commissioner Scott.
I, um. Great job, Greg. Yeah. Um. I have I yield.
Vice Attorney. Well, I'm finally warmed up, guys. Did you just, oh, my God.
I think I did.
How dare you? Um, so we had this training.
Mm-hmm.
We had a training this week that four of the five commissioners made it to and a bunch of board members.
And I totally forgot about it, even though I was reminded.
I'm not judging you.
I was, I meant to be there. I thought it was next week.
Um. I, there was something that was interesting that I hadn't heard before. Um, that seems really pertinent based on recent conversations at the commission. So Ashley from Local Government Center was presenting. Um, and she was talking about conflicts of interest, which we've talked about regularly at the commission and concerns for various conflicts of interest that come up in a town of our size. At the board level, it specifically came up when we were talking about the consolidated land use board. Um, but she said that there are municipalities in Montana that have local conflict of interest policies, which seems like it could be useful for the commission as it's a topic that has come up. Um, how do we? How do we clarify what a conflict of interest is so we all are following the same expectation and our board members um are also following the same expectation? So I would love to see this come up on an agenda, not necessarily immediately, but at some point, since it's a topic that has come up more than once. So I guess I'll make a motion. Um. I think it would be a good conversation to have as a commission and see what's possible, see some examples. Um, what other cities do and see if it's something that we would like to consider.
I'll suck at that. Way to order, man. Do we have to have a charter in order to do that? Because if we're
Because if we're not chartered, which is what we are not. I don't think we can do anything other than what the state laws have.
I would.
So I'm not sure if the state has conflict of interest laws that could trickle down to us or not.
Yeah, that would not be a question for me, but.
So the state does have a a code of ethics and code of conduct, as you recall from the the handbook, but. I will work with the the city attorney to find out to the extent that we can adopt an additional conflict of interest policy.
I was making the assumption that Ashley knew what form of government we had. And that she would have not offered something that we can, but I mean, it's a good question for sure. It's a good question.
Like to be a charter for.
So, thank you. So that is what, she said a lot of other interesting things, but that's the one that I would. That's the one that I wanted to bring up because it's important to what we've been talking about at the meeting prior, so. Yeah. Thanks for productive meeting. Nice to see so many big things move forward that we've been talking about for a while.
Thank you. Thank you all for all the conversations this evening. I would encourage folks to continue to ask questions about this ordinance to get the clarity that you need. I think that the door, obviously Mister Gage's door is open. So bring those to him for sure and. We do have another reading. There's a second reading on this, so you know, let's make sure we have clarity around people understanding how this is going to work. So please remember that door is open. And I think that's it. Thank you all for a good evening. I will. Include this meeting. Oh, I do. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Go move. Trying to do my smell.
Thank you. All in favor? Let's conclude this meeting in the Livingston City Commission on February sixth at nine twenty-two P M. Thank you, folks.